Hello, Counselor Ray, can you hear me okay? This is strange, I haven't done this before.
I can hear you a little.
There we go. So I'm remotely supporting today. This is a little bit odd for me because I can't tell when you're live. So if you could tell Kathy in chat when to unmute the chamber, I'll do that so we don't pick up sort of the small talk beforehand.
All right, we'll do that. We'll just, we'll send you a secret message.
Okay, thanks.
Secret handshake. Anyways, thanks.
Thank you.
The meeting host has to let me in.
Here we go. There we go.
Hi, everyone in chambers. I've unmuted your stream, so you're live.
Thank you. Okay, we've got all members of council here. Why am I hearing an echo? Who's not muted? Okay. So attendance at the start of the meeting is 100%. We've got Council McKee and I in chambers. I see Council Jolly here. I guess that's one of my videos too. Council Jolly, Council Hansen, Council Broaden, Council Hughes, and Council Watkins all at home. So 100%. We do have some speakers today. And we'll go in order that we receive them. And my, maybe it was in the email he sent me. I can't tell if they're all, most of them Zoom, Cheryl? Yeah. Where is that? Speaker list for today. Okay. I'm going to go with the order that they registered. So I've got Susan Creasy, she's online. I guess I could bring it up myself. Susan, are you there?
There she is, I see her. I'm here.
Thank you for joining us.
Okay, you want me to start?
You can start now. You know the drill, five minutes.
Yeah, I'm not going to use up the five minutes, so you're welcome. I'm honored. All right, so thank you for the opportunity to come and speak about the importance of a social housing specialist. That's been identified as a need by the homeless task force. And Albert is very fortunate to have a subject matter expert in Lori Scott, who's the affordable housing liaison. Lori is very knowledgeable in the bricks and mortar aspects of buildings. And what I see as being an important addition is to have a social housing specialist who can offer expertise in identifying social housing needs, and then work with funders and service providers to address those needs. This position can help address homelessness by focusing on the upstream prevention strategies and collaboration with social agencies, and who can provide housing stability on the whole continuum. Having that point person, who will be the dedicated resource able to focus on the housing needs and best practices, will be beneficial. At the moment, there are agencies who do focus on housing needs, but also have a lot of other things they're addressing. But to have that one person who can coordinate and source out funding and other needs would be very helpful. Done.
That was quick.
It was, yeah.
Any questions for Susan? I'm seeing none. Susan, you're welcome to stick around or watch it on the YouTube Live feed, but we'll probably get to that motion. It's hard to say, maybe half an hour, 45 minutes?
Okay, I'll probably, I'll just probably watch it on YouTube a little bit later. I've got some stuff happening, so.
No, that's good.
Yeah, thank you very much. All right, take care. Bye-bye.
All right, next we had Neil Cortesh wanting to speak to the Oakmont Trail through Zoom. Is Neil online? There he is. Hi, Mr. Cortesh.
Oh, Madam Mayor, members of City Council, thanks very much for the opportunity today. And just a quick thank you to all that you guys continue to do. I don't envy you guys being in your shoes during this crazy time and having to make some tough decisions. So kudos to you.
It's kind of like a reunion of one of your councilors, one of your council meetings, because your former mayor is online as well. Richard Plaid.
Is he? Oh, I don't see him on there. Excellent, hi, Richard. Yeah, I thought I'd stop by today, and I'm not as prepared as I'd like to be, but just a little crazy going on at school these days. But you know, one of my regrets from being on City Council was not continuing Red Willow Trail on the north side of the river there past Oakmont. And it just never really came up. There was no development happening in Oakmont during my time on council, but I've thought about it since, and why don't we have this connected on the north side? And then when we went into lockdown in the spring, and I ended up using the trails with my family quite a bit more often. You'd go up one side and then come back down the other, but you couldn't make it back all the way down the other side. You'd have to cross over. And I just look around at cities around the world, right? Like, I mean, there's some big cities, Chicago, that they've spent years trying to reclaim their riverfront, and it's been very expensive. But even a place like Saskatoon, where, you know, they've got beautiful trails on both sides of the city, except for one piece of property on the south side of the river there, where they've got residential lots going right down to the river. And it kind of fragments the whole network of trails that they have in the city. And that's kind of what we have going on in St. Albert right now, even Edmonton. Look at the challenges that they're having trying to get people to access the water. And so we've got this gem, as you know, Red Willow Trails is a Red Willow Park system and the trails along the river. It is a true gem that all St. Albertans love. You know, I think different councils over the years have been told why we can't complete the trail there, whether it's development issues, whether it's cost. But I look at the crisscrossing trails through Forest Ravine, and you can't tell me that we can't figure out something to get that done there. So I'm really encouraged to see that there is a motion on the books there, and that there is a plan, hopefully, to connect Red Willow Trail on both sides of the river. I'd like, so I'm obviously speaking in favor, and I'd like to see it done sooner rather than later. I think it's one of those things that the longer you leave it, the harder it gets, right? People move in, people have different opinions about what should be there. There's maybe increasing costs as time goes on. And I also think it's something that everyone in St. Albert can get behind. And I don't think you'll get much flack from people for supporting the continuation of something that people love so much in St. Albert. So that's it. That's all I have to say. Thanks for hearing me out, and I hope you take that into consideration when voting on continuing Red Willow Trail there.
Thank you so much, Mr. Cortesh. Is there any questions? Seeing no members of council have questions. All right, I'm not exactly sure when we're going to get to that. It's the first motion on our agenda, and it has been pulled from consent, so it probably won't be too long if you want to tune into the YouTube channel.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. All right, next I have Wiley Simmons, Pick 'n Ball, and he's in person. Thank you for joining us.
Thanks for having me. I do appreciate your time today, and being in attendance, both the mayor and the folks on the screen today. My name is Wiley Simmons, and until recently, my wife, who just passed away, with 30-year residence of 44 Alpine Boulevard. We back on, excuse me, to the park there. And for the record, we've never complained about noise. Not from the rink that bangs around all winter. We've never complained about the football. Never complained about the kids out back in the school. We never complained about the tennis courts. And then the days those kids would come and play road hockey and play their loud music and have fun, we never complained once, okay? I'm complaining now about the Alpine pickleball courts. I'm sure the city had great intentions building the pickleball courts in our neighborhood, but the city screwed up. There's no consultation with the residents, with the neighbors. There was no research done as to the problems pickleball noise can have on a neighborhood. And it's simple to do. If you Google pickleball noise, thousands of problems come up on Google. It's easy to do, but obviously wasn't done by the city. This shows a real lack of empathy for the citizens of Aitkinsdale. Just those folks there, the working-class folks, just drop it in on us, and now we've got to live with it. Well, it's time to complete what you dropped on our lives. It's time to put up a noise abatement fence. Again, a simple Google, "pickleball noise abatement fencing," will bring up several examples of caring communities putting up fencing to protect its neighbors from the random and nonstop impact sounds of these paddles hitting these balls. When we complained to the city three years ago, we were directed to Parks and Rec, where we met with two ladies on site and were told to be patient. They were on our side, and things take time. Then on the day it came before council to implement the noise abatement fencing, not only were we, the people affected, not able to speak to you, but the two people from Parks and Rec, who were supposed to, and said they would advocate for us, they sat silent on their hands, and they didn't say a word. Therefore, you weren't informed properly of our problem. That day, you didn't understand, and you voted no. Today is different. You all know the noise is affecting our lives now. By voting no to pickleball noise abatement, the city has created, or excuse me, has cheated us out of our tax money the last three years because the city has stolen our backyards from us. Stolen our backyards from us. We can't enjoy going outside or entertaining friends and family because of the impact noise of pickleball. Think about that in your house. Go home and go in your backyard right now and see how you would enjoy that. Having friends and family over for a barbecue, and you can't have a conversation because of pickleball noise. I guarantee any of you had this noise factory drop beside your house, it would be your highest priority. It would be something that you would need to fix, and because of the power that you wield in the city, it would be fixed. You know, recently I've driven by the multimillion-dollar sound wall on St. Albert Trail, as well as the new skate park construction that's going on, all the money being spent there. And I wonder why aren't Aitkinsdale residents worthy of the city money? I think we all know if this would be up in Kingswood, it would never have been even thought about going into Kingswood. You know that. But you drop it into Aitkinsdale, and we have to live with it. I'm asking you to do the right thing today and vote to complete. Yes, to complete what you started, the construction of the Alpine pickleball courts by erecting noise abatement fencing. So tax-paying Aitkinsdale residents can enjoy their backyards again. This fence should have been in the plan three years ago when you decided to put this in on us, but it wasn't. Again, please do the right thing today and vote yes for this pickleball abatement noise. That's all I have to say, and I appreciate your time.
Well, is there, hold on, Mr. Simmons, is there any questions of our speaker? I'm seeing no questions. I just wanted to give council that opportunity to ask questions, but none at this time.
Thank you for your time again.
You're welcome. We'll probably get to that one, maybe within the hour. All right, next on our list is Travis Pareko, which is in person as well. Thank you for joining us. Yeah, there's a little bar there, although we can hear you. Yeah, so go ahead whenever you're ready. You have five minutes.
Sorry, should we be able to hear the speaker?
Yeah, we can hear him here. Oh, you're having problems there?
Can you hear him?
Yeah, no, I don't understand why that would be a problem. We're trying to figure it out, guys.
All right, sorry about that.
Is that better? Okay, go ahead, five minutes.
And so I found out on Sunday night that this was happening while he kind of said he knows that I was annoyed at times too, sitting in my backyard, that you can hear the pickleball, that you have to wear earplugs, that sort of thing. The people upstairs, I asked them too, so they're not in the best physical health, so they kind of said, gave me a quick note to read into it. They said, "To whom it may concern, the noise from the pickleball courts generated quite a bit of noise, annoyance, and interferes with our well-being. We hear the noise from early morning to very late at night during spring, summer, and fall. Does it bother us when we are outside in the backyard gardening? We can hear the noise inside our house when our windows are open." And it says, "While entertaining in our backyard and house, we can hear the pickleballs also." In my case, it's an annoyance. I come back from work, we try to share the backyard, they have it in the morning. I go in kind of at nighttime when they're doing their thing. Get back from work, want to throw my boots off, go outside and sit in the limited summer that we do have. You go outside, and you hear from 6 o'clock till sometimes 10 o'clock, when you get the last chingers that want to get that last game of pickleball in before it gets too dark. You get to hear basically an exceptionally loud dripping noise with the occasional "whoo" as if they scored a point or whatever. That's not the worst of it. On the weekends, instead of...
I mean, there's some big cities, Chicago, that they've spent years trying to reclaim their riverfront, and it's been very expensive. But even a place like Saskatoon where, you know, they've got beautiful trails on both sides of the city, except for one piece of property on the south side of the river there where they've got residential lots going right down to the river. And it kind of fragments the whole network of trails that they have in the city. And that's, that's kind of what we have going on in St. Albert right now, even Edmonton. Look at the challenges that they're having trying to get people to access the water. And so we've got this gem, as you know, Red Willow Trails is a Red Willow Park system and the trails along the river. It is, it is a true gem that, that all St. Albertans love. You know, I think different councils over the years have been told why we can't complete the trail there, whether it's development issues, whether it's cost. But I look at the crisscrossing trails through Forest Ravine, and you can't tell me that we can't figure out something to, to get that done there. So I'm really encouraged to see that there is a, a motion on the books there and that there is a plan, hopefully to connect Red Willow Trail on both sides of the river. I'd like, so I'm obviously speaking in favor, but I'd like to see it done sooner rather than later. I think it's one of those things that the longer you leave it, the harder it gets, right? People move in, people have different opinions about what should be there. There's, there's maybe increasing costs as time goes on. And I also think it's something that everyone in St. Albert can get behind. And I, and I, I don't think you'll get much, much flack from people for supporting the continuation of something that people love so much in St. Albert. So that's it. That's all I have to say. Thanks for hearing me out and I, and I hope you take that into consideration when voting on continuing Red Willow Trail there.
Thank you so much, Mr. Cortez. Is there any questions? Seeing no members of council have questions. All right. I'm not exactly sure when we're going to get to that. It's the first motion on our agenda and it has been pulled from consent, so it probably won't be too long if you want to tune into the YouTube channel.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. All right, next I have Wiley Simmons, Pickleball, and he's in person. Thank you for joining us.
Thanks for having me. I, I do appreciate the, your time today and being in, in attendance, both the mayor and the folks that are on the, on the screen today. My name is Wiley Simmons and until recently, my wife, who just passed away, with thirty, thirty year residence of forty-four Alpine Boulevard. We back on, excuse me, to the park there. And for the record, we've never complained about noise, not from the rink that bangs around all winter. We've never complained about the football, never complained about the kids out back in the school. We never complained about the tennis courts. And then the days those kids would come and play road hockey and play their loud music and have fun, we never complained once, okay? I'm complaining now about the Alpine pickleball courts. I'm sure the city had great intentions building the pickleball courts in our neighborhood, but the city screwed up. There's no consultation with the residents, with the neighbors. There was no research done as to the problems pickleball noise can have on a neighborhood. And it's simple to do. If you Google pickleball noise, thousands of problems come up on Google. It's easy to do, but obviously wasn't done by the city. This shows a real lack of empathy for the citizens of Aitkinsdale. Just those folks there, the working class folks, just drop it in on us, and now we've got to live with it. Well, it's time to complete what you dropped on our lives. It's time to put up a noise abatement fence. Again, a simple Google, a pickleball noise abatement fencing will bring up several examples of caring communities, putting up fencing to protect its neighbors from the random and nonstop impact sounds of these paddles hitting these balls. When we complained to the city three years ago, we were directed to Parks and Rec, where we met with two ladies on site and were told to be patient. They were on our side and things take time. Then on the day it came before council to implement the noise abatement fencing, not only were we, the people affected, not able to speak to you, but the two people from Parks and Rec who were supposed to and said they would advocate for us, they sat silent on their hands and they didn't say a word. Therefore, you weren't informed properly of our problem. That day, you didn't understand and you voted no. Today is different. You all know the noise is affecting our lives now. By voting no to pickleball noise abatement, the city has created, or excuse me, has cheated us out of our tax money the last three years because the city has stolen our backyards from us, stolen our backyards from us. We can't enjoy going outside or entertaining friends and family because of the impact noise of pickleball. Think about that in your house. Go home and go in your backyard right now and see how you would enjoy that. Having friends and family over for a barbecue and you can't have a conversation because of pickleball noise. I guarantee any of you had this noise factory drop beside your house, it would be your highest priority. It would be something that you would need to fix. And because of the power that you wield in the city, it would be fixed. You know, recently I've driven by the multimillion dollar sound wall on, on St. Albert Trail, as well as the new skate park construction that's going on, all the money being spent there. And they wonder why aren't Aitkinsdale residents worthy of the city money? I think we all know if this would be up in Kingswood, it would never have been even thought about going into Kingswood, you know that. We drop it into Aitkinsdale and we have to live with it. I'm asking you to do the right thing today and vote to complete. Yes, to complete what you started, the construction of the Alpine pickleball courts by erecting noise abatement fencing. So taxpaying Aitkinsdale residents can enjoy their backyards again. This fence should have been in the plan three years ago when you decided to put this in on us, but it wasn't. Again, please do the right thing today and vote yes for this pickleball abatement noise. That's all I have to say and I appreciate your time.
Well, is there, hold on, Mr. Simmons, is there any questions of our speaker? I'm seeing no questions. I just want to give council that opportunity to ask questions, but none at this time.
Thank you for your time again.
You're welcome. We'll probably get that, to that one, maybe within the hour. All right, next on our list is Travis Pareko, which is in person as well. Thank you for joining us. Yeah, there's a little bar there, although we can hear you. Yeah. So go ahead whenever you're ready. You have five minutes.
Sorry, should we be able to hear the speaker?
Yeah, we can hear him here. Oh, you're having problems there?
Can you hear him?
Yeah, no, I don't understand why that would be a problem. We're trying to figure it out, guys.
All right, sorry about that.
Is that better? Okay, go ahead, five minutes.
And so I found out on Sunday night that this was happening while he kind of said, he knows that I was annoyed at times too, sitting in my backyard that you could hear the pickleball, that you have to wear earplugs, that sort of thing. The people upstairs, I asked them too, so they're not in the best physical health. So they kind of said, gave me a quick note to, to read into it. They said, "To whom it may concern, the noise from the pickleball courts generated quite a bit of noise, annoyance, and interferes with our well-being. We hear the noise from early morning to very late at night during spring, summer, and fall. Does it bothers us when we are outside in the backyard gardening? We can hear the noise from inside our house when our windows are open." And it says, "While entertaining in our backyard and house, we can hear the pickleballs also." In my case, it's an annoyance. I come back from work, we try to share the backyard, they have it in the morning. I go in kind of at nighttime when they're doing their thing. Get back from work, want to throw my boots off, go outside and sit in the limited summer that we do have. You go outside and you hear from six o'clock till sometimes ten o'clock, when you get the last keeners that want to get that last game of pickleball in before it gets too dark. You get to hear basically an exceptionally loud dripping noise with the occasional "whoo", as if they scored a point or whatever. That's not the worst of it. On the weekends, instead of it getting better, it seemed to get worse. Someone in city council, in their wisdom, let them open the courts half an hour earlier. So it starts at seven thirty in the morning, goes till, pick a time, ten o'clock at night if you're the keener group. That means I could sit outside in my backyard like any person here, any person, counselor, and basically my backyard is useless for those two days. It can be up to fourteen and a half hours that they can be playing pickleball with that noise. I'm not opposed to pickleball in presence, kind of happy to see people up getting exercise. But I think if anybody had that in their backyard after playing their one hour and have to go home and listen to that for the next twelve hours, they'd probably be up here too asking you to resolve it. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Appreciate your time. Any questions, anyone? Seeing none. All right, I have Glennis Edwards and Renee Lukey on FCSS contributions, and they're both on Zoom. I saw Renee earlier. I haven't seen Glennis.
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Right now I can see you and I saw Renee. All right, are you both speaking together or do you?
Yes.
Yeah. All right, so you both, between, to be of five minutes, so go ahead.
Okay, so as board chair with St. Albert Public Schools, I thank you for this opportunity to speak today. And I'm going to speak against your motion to reduce your municipal contribution to family and community support services. Our board understands the difficult fiscal reality facing the city as we as a division are struggling as well. Within our difficult fiscal reality, our division is continuing to make mental health a top priority, and I'm here today to urge the city to do the same. Our school division is very grateful for and proud of our partnerships with the city. We have worked with you in creative ways to support the families in our community. Please continue to provide the current funding for FCSS so that together we can continue to support our struggling families, particularly during this incredibly stressful time. Joining me remotely is Renee Lukey. She's our division's supervisor of student services, who can give you more details and answer questions. Thanks.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. Today I'll speak to the incredible impact that family and community support services has had on the staff, students, and families within our community. For many years, St. Albert Public Schools has collaborated with the city of St. Albert to ensure that the needs of our students and families are being met. The wellness of our community members is a joint responsibility of all community partners, regardless of where the funding comes from. The emotional and physical wellness of our students and families has a significant impact on all areas of life. The support that our community receives from FCSS has reached many individuals and had a profound impact on their successes and contributions to our community. I will provide some examples from over the past few years. The support from our community members could have been seen from the hundreds of mental health packages handed out at the bus mall on Bell Let's Talk Day, including a little something to make them smile and resources available in our, a list of resources available in our community and beyond, should they need to access supports for depression or resources on suicide prevention. The packages were created by our students in our schools and were distributed by community partners from the schools AHS, Allied Health, RCMP, Probation, Safe Society, the Family Resource Center, and the City of St. Albert. For the mother who has, pardon me, for the mother who has nowhere to go and feels that the world is overwhelming, while she tries to navigate how to find a new place to live and how to keep her children safe while trying to gain employment, while going through a messy divorce, the family school liaison worker can be a safe place to go where she can be heard and provided with resources so that she can stay on her feet and her children can feel safe at home, at school, and in a community that they love. When a youth has been in trouble in the community because of the stress from online learning, dad has lost his job, and at home, things are hard right now. Our school counselor can work collaboratively with the youth counselor to ensure that the student has someone to go to during the summer months when our schools are closed. This will allow the student to stay connected and the school counselor to sleep a little bit easier at night, knowing that there's somebody connected to the student during the summer months. What we know is that without these preventative and ongoing services, our community will see an increase in prevention in depression, anxiety, suicide, poverty, domestic violence, drug and alcohol use, homelessness, and crime, to name a few. All of these areas impact our community, no matter who you are or what your role is. These challenges will become a problem for the city and its residents if we don't continue to provide the prevention and entry level supports that the city provides now to our residents. This is especially concerning during a pandemic, when we are already seeing the increase in the need for supports by all community partners. As community partners, we, we are all experiencing fiscal cuts and having to prioritize where our funds will go. What we ask of you is for you not to take these supports away from our children, youth, and their families. It truly does take a village to raise a child, and these children are the future of our wonderful community. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Any questions for either Glennis or Renee? And I see Crimson there, she wants to answer any school board budget questions. Okay, seeing none, we're going to move on. Oh, sorry, Council Hughes, go ahead.
Thank you. I was thinking, and thanks Renee for speaking. I'm just, if this program is cut, what do you think the real consequences are going to be? Because I don't think you guys have it in your budget to make up the difference yourself. So is it basically just that these, whatever the children who need this supports, the families' supports are just basically going to, they, they won't have anything with that, or what's going to happen if this is cut?
So really, truly, the, the impact, it depends on which areas are cut because, you know, there are, there are supports for family school liaison. You know, we sit at the mental health committee table as well. There's a variety of resources that we access, so it would depend on which area specifically is cut within FCSS. What we do see is that the prevention and entry level work that the different supports through FCSS provide is, you know, we've very carefully, as community partners, tried not to duplicate services. So that entry level of support where families have a, a place to go isn't the same as going to the provincial building for mental health supports or going to see a counselor through a private psychologist, that type of a thing. So we will see an increase in responsibility, I would say, at the school level, in other areas as well, that, that there really isn't anything that is quite the same as what is being provided for prevention. So much of the funds provincially and in other service providers are put towards supports for those with, you know, diagnosed mental illness or, or challenges that way, as opposed to setting people in the right direction and providing response at the beginning of a situation as opposed to when it becomes a bigger challenge. So that is where some of our work that we do with, with FCSS is unique.
And do you, you serve all the public schools with that funding? Because the funding looks like it's around, I'm guessing at two hundred thousand-ish. So, and so are all the public schools actually served with that funding?
So all of the funding, some of the funding from FCSS is for all community members. And so it's not just the public schools who are accessing. It would be the Catholic schools as well or, and other residents who maybe homeschool their kids, go to the Francophone board. So students from throughout our community and families are accessing. St. Albert Public Schools does support, does have a contract of agreement with the city currently to offset some costs for one of the family school liaison workers. However, it's not just a service to us, it's a service for everybody in the, in the city.
Perfect. Thank you for clarifying. I appreciate it. That's it.
Thank you. Any more questions? All right, seeing none, I'm going to move on in our list. Thank you, ladies, for joining us. Next, we have, by Zoom, we have Matthias Brenn-Holten. Are you with us, Matthias? And you are muted.
Yes, I'm here. Thank you.
Finally put a face to a name. Thank you for joining us.
Yes, I've corresponded with quite a few of you, so I appreciate the opportunity to speak. I am also a neighbor in Aitkinsdale and one of the residents who contacted Recreation and Parks in 2018 about that constant noise generated by pickleball. I live less than seventy-five feet from the closest pickleball court. I've lived here for ten years and our backyard faces south into Alpine Park. My house backs onto the pickleball, the skating rinks, the baseball diamonds, Albergish School, the soccer field. You name it, it's all out there. All these locations generate noise. We've watched Albergish expand from more than ten portals and the school population has almost doubled. We hear the bats hitting balls from diamonds, we hear the whistles on the soccer field, and probably one of the loudest things we listen to was the puck hitting off the board of the rink. We hear that cacophony of noise from all the school kids. There's like two, three hundred of them out there at a time. And again, never complained, never an issue. We don't have an issue with seniors, we don't have an issue with people enjoying the outdoors. We don't even have an issue with pickleball players in general. From our deck, we watch the nonstop migration of people, walking to the school, walking their dogs, riding their bikes, running down the path. This is our extended backyard, our homes, our community. And some people would say this is annoying, but we actually enjoy it. Every spring, I clear hockey pucks out of my yard and there's two up on the roof right now. We're not whiners, okay? This enjoyment of our life here in St. Albert came to an end when the grand opening of pickleball courts in 2018. We walked over to the opening festivities and were impressed by the turnout and the quality of the facilities. We continue to watch the increase in use day by day and week by week. At summer peak, pickleball is now played sixteen hours a day with over forty-eight players and twenty additional spectators. So on top of the impact noise, that ball hitting that racket nonstop every day for the whole spring, summer, and fall, we also have some cheering and we also have people parking and doing all the regular stuff that any outdoor activity brings. We couldn't understand why pickleball bothered us so much when nothing else did. To understand our concerns, we did some background digging. We Googled pickleball noise and found that we are not alone. In the fall of 2018, we reached out to Recreation and Parks Department. Now mentioned in our community living meeting, no research was done prior to the conversion of these courts. They said tennis, pickleball, same thing. What's the big deal? We all know this is a mistake. We couldn't even hold a conversation with the Parks Department next to the pickleball court. While we were discussing the issue, we had to walk away a hundred feet in order to hear each other talking. These courts should not have been built twenty-five feet from the local residences. There have been intensive studies on the effects of pickleball nearby residents, and all these results have a common theme: do not build in residential neighborhoods. Do not build within three hundred and fifty feet of the closest residence. And if you're going to build it, install acoustic paneling and minimum of ten feet high. The impact of pickleball noise on the neighborhood isn't about cheering and having fun. It's about the impact of a ball on a racket. It's not the same as tennis. The noise generated by the game is louder, sharper, and at a higher pitch. It makes you cringe when you hear it. You become so sensitive to it, it wrecks your whole day. Pickleball paddle noise is a sound of classification called impact noise, a noise that occurs when an object collides with another object. It's a high frequency noise that our ears are tuned to. It's not a gradual rise and fall, but a sharp, instantaneous sound. In order to measure it, you require a specific meter that samples sound in the milliseconds to catch the sound of the impact at its peak. Our noise bylaw has restrictions on noise of over sixty-five decibels. I've sent you guys several reports and there's a hundred of them out there if you want to go find them yourself. They show the readings, the pickleball range from sixty-four to eighty-one decibels. This exceeds our noise bylaw. We also learned about the Parks bylaw, which, when some pickleball players showed up at six-thirty on a Saturday to get a game in before their tee time. You can put out all the signs you want about which courts are open and how you'd like them to use quieter rackets and, and ask them to follow the rules. I called bylaw and I found out two things. Parks open at five AM and there's no bylaw officer on duty during non-regular business hours. So I was directed to the RCMP. This is not about education. There are signs with rules and other attempts to lessen the impact on the neighborhood. But they unfortunately play at a time when they can get on a court and it's light enough. They hop the fence between the courts and they play whatever court is closest to their car. They play till eleven PM on the longest days of the year. Our final remark, we have been patient as requested. We are now twenty-five months into this discussion. Soon the gates will open again this spring and the nonstop high frequency noise will ring dusk till dawn. We don't believe one person's leisure activities should, and I quote from my, from our bylaw, "Make, continue, or cause permit to be made or continued any unreasonable loud racket or unusual sound which annoys, disturbs, injures, endangers, detracts from the comfort, repose, health, peace, and safety of any other person of ordinary sensitivity. Fix the problem or close the court." I'd like to thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Matthias. Any questions? Seeing none. I'm trying to think, we'll get to that motion probably in the next hour. And I'm assuming this might be a relation, Sherry Brenn-Holten on pickleball as well. Is Sherry with us?
Sherry is here. She's uncomfortable speaking. She figured we covered all the points. She'd just be repeating again. I can read her statement for you if you want.
Say that again, real quick.
Yeah. No, she feels we've covered all the bases here and just let her know that she echoes our sentiment.
Okay, thank you very much. Next on my speaker list is Dr. Richard Plain to talk about electrical franchise fees. Welcome, Dr. Plain. I think you're muted. There we go. Perfect.
Clear now?
We can hear you.
Okay, good afternoon. An exciting topic, electrical franchise fees. It is an exciting topic, given the circumstance. We're in the middle of a massive recession, the worst we've seen since the nineteen thirties. We are also in the midst of a major health crisis. We are in, to use an expression, in that pond with the alligators, all circling our heels. And in the middle of that, in terms of trying to safeguard the interests of the public, while trying to preserve a somewhat tattered economy, we've got three sets of actors: the federal government on one hand, the provincial, and the local government. The heavy lifting from the debt side, of course, needs to be done by the federal government. It is a capability that no other level of government has. And there, for whatever reasons and however they're doing it, they are doing it, for good or bad, in terms of the policy implications. The provincial government also, budget deficits are a way of life now over in the, under the dome in Edmonton. And here, we are following the normal dictum that we must balance our budget and be very careful of the resources and that we have available to use them effectively in that process. And certainly, city council and its administration has worked very hard in trying to do that. I believe in putting budget two thousand and twenty-one together. When that is all said and done, and the focus, one part of it is to try to, is it possible to come in with a zero property tax increase? That certainly seems to be on track in one form or other. But one thing that is not on track is what will amount to in the third year here of putting in the last step in the three-year cycle, moving to a ten percent franchise tax on the distribution revenue generated by Fortis. But in doing that, we are putting in the equivalent of a thirty-three point three percent, oh, it's actually three-three-three percent increase in that fee. Now, it does not, in the middle of my economic calculus or in terms of being a part of the team that's focusing on, on trying to salvage, salvage, salvage our economy, make reasonable fiscal policy sense to be in the middle of that, increasing the fees, the franchise, the electrical fees by thirty-three percent. So we need to do two things. Not only deal with the property tax issue, but we need to deal with the electrical fee increase. All that needs to be done, I respectfully submit, is to recognize that we have many options within that budget. You all know them, or if you don't, you've got some very clever people in your administration that can handle it. In terms of being able to absorb what is approximately eight hundred and thirty or- Uh, in terms of being able to absorb what is approximately eight hundred and thirty or so gross uh, re- revenue changes that would be involved if you didn't, don't put this increase that was planned three years ago in a period of relative stability to deal with the long-run structural problem that we are in the middle of a major economic crisis, we're going to put it in regardless of what the circumstance. It is raining, it is the time, we're in the pond, the alligators are here, we need some breathing space, both residents, both businesses. While true, it's a modest help, but we need leadership and to say, you do not, as a city, turn and put in major increases in your fees and your electrical franchise taxes, most people refer to it, but it's actually a franchise fee. We do not put that in uh, and just focus on property tax side of it. You deal with the full package. Now that means next year, yes, you've got adjustments you can make and in this year, but it's relatively small. You can do this and you can handle it. You've got a number of options, anywhere in terms of the program side or in terms of accessing any of your reserves or stabilization or other issues. This is not a big problem to solve that, but it's really important in the leadership side to say you're not going for a thirty-three percent increase in the franchise fee rate in the middle of this type of recession. That will destroy the credibility and leadership, which you're all capable of and have been doing in putting this budget together. So I urge you defer this year the two and a half percent increase. Freeze it at the seven and a half percent that's already in place.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Any questions? Go ahead, Council Watkins.
The, the loss is seven hundred and eighty-six thousand is what we're being told net revenue, which would result in a point seven percent tax increase. Uh, and the option are reducing service levels or increasing taxes. And as you said, you don't want any tax increase. So what service levels do you think we should reduce?
Well, first of all, uh, you're not talking about including any of the reserves or the stabilization functions that are there to do with that. When you've got a rain in the middle of a cloud and downpour and a hailstorm, now's the time when you actually need to get out the umbrella, reach in and shed the rain and shed the hail. This is the time we need it. Uh, and that doesn't necessarily mean you have to go out. If you want to, you can certainly work on expenditure side and cuts. You can do a number of other options. We could all sit down and come up with about five or six of them. It's only three quarters, three quarters of a percent or so or less. It's not, uh, uh, I mean, in any budget, you can basically a three percent, you can move that very easily around side to side. Uh, and this is a one-year pro- proposal and it's not talking about the issue of whether or not you should be implementing the franchise fee side that that was dealt with the two years ago in part, uh, and that's a policy and other matter. No, this is just saying, look, here's the issue, here's the problem. Don't do this in the middle of this recession and don't view it as you have to go out and necessarily cut the services. Uh, you might wish to or want to, but you don't have to. You've got options.
So, so you're, uh, if you don't cut services, then I guess the option you're recommending is use reserves, use reserve funds to cover.
That's part, part of it. Also, some of the programs, uh, you know, uh, it's not necessarily a good spot for me to get in to discuss this, but, but I mean, uh, uh, we decide or I see your resources, I, I don't have the exact numbers in front of me to undertake the work on the intermunicipal development plan. Well, you can either postpone that for a year and use the funds that would have been allocated for that purpose on the other side and you could finish your municipal development plan before you get on with doing the IMDP. There's a number of op, that is just a very simple little observation, whether it makes any sense, but that's part of the thing that very smart people you've got employed for you can give you lots of things. Three percent movements. You can do it. If you want to treat it as well, you either got to cut the services uh, or not in the side. No, that isn't true. The whole package is there. All the consolidated revenue sources are there.
Okay, thank you.
That's all you have? Okay, thank you. I'm just going to confirm this, Dr. Plain. We have drawn down reserves. Two million dollars. We've already, um. I don't want to get into a big debate, but uh, we, we've taken your advice. We've looked at programs. We have motions in front of us. We'll see if they pass today, but uh, we'll, we'll, uh. We've, I think we've heated your advice, Dr. Plain, and, and followed that and we're still left with a one point one. So we'll see where it goes by the end of today.
The, the city with the advanced funding that the province gave, again, I, like an ordinary citizen, I only get what comes through the paper and bits and pieces. But it seemed to me, I saw somewhere at the beginning of this process, that something in the neighborhood of about two point eight million dollars or so was, in terms of this was recommendation for that to be continued on to offset unexpected increases in the future. Now, if that's the case, I'm suggesting you use it this year. It's a pretty reasonable bet. I'll bet everybody a cup of coffee at least that we've, we're going to have some type of operational virus in place here in this year. We need to deal with this short run issue and, and you've got a lot of the capabilities there. And, and the project, because some aren't service side in a sense, saying, well, we won't plow your streets or we won't do that or this. No, no, no. But you may not want to undertake a major plan investment, uh, or study or other types of things in that line. There's a lot, the three percent is not a difficult thing to handle in a budget.
All right. Any more questions? Seeing none, we have one last registered speaker on pickleball again, from the Brennholen family, I would assume, Caitlin, are you joining us?
Yeah, she had to go back to class.
Okay. Well, I appreciate the family's interest and we'll, uh, we're going to get into that right now. So either you can stick around here or watch it on our YouTube channel. All right, council, I'm going to um, go to the consent agenda now. We've had some emails, uh, and I'm going to list what I have consolidated as pulled off of consent. And you can nod if I am right. I have uh, four point one Oakmont Trail pulled. I have four point two, uh, the DARP withdrawn. And Council Hanson, can you just confirm that verbally?
Yes, I'm withdrawing that, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. I have four point four, the Cogen pulled. I have four point five, Aikenstel Pickleball Courts pulled. I have four point six, or sorry. Yes, that was pulled. Uh, four point six, the uh, facility water and energy audits pulled. I have four point seven Alpine Pickleball Court Sound Study pulled. I have five point. Sorry, Council Hanson, you just emailed. You want five point one, uh, the reduced residential traction pulled? Is that correct?
I wanted six point one if it hadn't been.
Oh, so not five point one. Okay, sorry. Uh, six point one has been.
Okay.
It, it, I was going to anyway, so that's good. Um, so.
No, it was five, sorry, five point one zero, which was the mayor's special events budget. I, maybe I didn't add the zero.
Zero one five.
Oh, zero one five, yeah. Five point one zero on the agenda.
Okay, so no one wants residential traction pulled?
No.
Okay, I'm going on. Tourism supports was pulled by Council Hughes, which is zero seven. Uh, FCSS contributions, which is zero zero nine. I have uh, zero twelve, the recreation and sports community groups was pulled by Sheena, but it needed to be anyway, so thank you for that. Uh, public art reserves, zero one three was pulled by Natalie. Uh, zero one four Canada Day was pulled by Sheena. So you want the mayor's special events budget pulled? Council Hanson? I, I needed to anyway to make the correct motion, but.
That's all. I, I just want clarification and put that one forward properly.
That had to come off.
Yeah.
Uh, I have zero one six, the mayor's task force and homelessness is pulled. I have zero twenty-nine, the electrical franchise fee pulled, and I think both Council Hanson and I would like six point one, the vacuum truck pulled. We're good? All right. Anything else, guys? All right, can I have a motion to pass the rest on consent? Okay, it's in the chat if you need to read it. Go ahead, Council Hughes.
Okay. Okay. So that the recommendations in the agenda reports, following agenda report be approved? And the first one would be five point three PM, twenty-one zero zero eight athletes. Oh, actually, let me go back one. Five point one, reduced residential attraction. Five point three, athlete, north athlete and artist development grant. Five point five, service place Halloween haunt. Five point six, mayor celebration of the arts. Uh, five point twelve, intermunicipal development funding, plan funding. Five point fourteen, bring your own device operating budget reduction. And those are all of them. Oh, and sorry, four point three, the neighborhood traffic calming strategy also there. Sorry, I missed that one.
No, that's okay. I think. I think that's it.
Sorry, Ma- Mayor, did I hear that the five point six was being pulled to change the wording?
Yes.
Oh. Did I have that in there? I apologize.
Still there. You're right.
Okay, thank you, Natalie, for catching that.
On my list.
Sorry, I thought I had it. So what's drop?
Four point three is there. Five point one is there. Five point three is there.
Five point five. Not five point six, right?
Point six, you're right. Um.
And five twelve and five fourteen.
That's what I got. Okay, thank you. Call for the vote. And we will just use all of us are participants button. Oops. Is that unanimous? I don't see any Xs. Do you have seven checkmarks? Okay, great. Well, there's some work out of our way, guys. Okay, we're going to go in order now. First one on uh, debate. Is four point one PM zero two two Oakmont Trail moved by Council Mackay? I'll get you to just read it. And then we can go to questions and then we can accept and start debate.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. That the first phase of rec dash zero four five Oakmont Trail phase two development moved from unfunded to funded in twenty twenty-one. Do you need me to identify a capital funding source?
It would come from capital reserves? Okay.
Pardon me?
Any capital project that doesn't have a funding source associated would come from capital reserves.
So. Does that need to be put in the motion?
You're good.
Okay, good. Thank you.
All right. Any questions on this before we go to debate?
Sorry, how much is it?
Okay, no questions. I accept your motion. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think, um, you know, when we've looked at this, I mean, we all recognize the importance of our trail system and certainly Mr. Cortash has identified it, but it's also uh, certainly comes uh, to many of us either informally or formally through uh, city documents. In fact, our recreation use and satisfaction surveys identified seventy percent of our residents use their trails in our systems or in our city. And it's consistently ranked as one of the most attractive features about living in our community. And like Mr. Cortash identified, you know, this recent lockdown that we had in the spring and summer, I did also take the opportunity to explore uh, some of our uh, ravines and our trail systems and reacquaint myself and also find some new trail systems that even though I've lived here for thirty-some odd years, um, I've never been on before. And, and so, you know, when I was doing some background, the Red Willow Trail System covers almost a hundred kilometers and not only connects our uh, trail system along the river valley, but it connects our neighborhoods. And you know, in this time pandemic, we talk about the importance of being able to get out in our community, but also the importance of reconnecting with our neighbors. And this gives us a good opportunity outs, out, outside. So, you know, for many years now, and certainly since twenty fifteen, um, we've been receiving inquiries or requests to complete the missing portion of the Oakmont Trail System that runs along the north side of the river. Um, you know, it's the project um, is aligned and thank you very much for administration and your backgrounder. Yeah, a project is aligned with both city plan two thousand and seven. It's identified again in our draft of our new MDP flourish. And uh, certainly has it been identified in our active transportation strategy. It's uh, again, provides for that off-street connectivity for active modes of transportation and improved connectivity between Oakmont Neighborhood along the river and South Among, across the uh, Oakmont Pedestrian Bridge. So I mean, we do know too, in some of the recent uh, uh, development applications that have been in front of us, that there are some shortcomings in there and there's some new development that's being uh, looked at and potentially there is possibility that that new development, if approved, would provide some connectivity and it might even also provide some of what we're looking for in this uh, motion. But if the motion is passed, it's intended only to fund the first phase over a two-year period. That would really include a detailed review of the uh, proposed trail alignment. And it would conduct, I think, what's missing in that sense of what's the geotechnical and the environmental assessments. But it would also identify and perhaps deal with some of the trail alignment issues that certainly we all know because of the existing trails' closeness to uh, the Botanica one and Botanica two, and also some of the issue with the flood plain. So um, the, the other thing that's very important and what I'm talking, it would be the robust um, very engaged or public participation process that would be required. And so we would really start to clarify and identify the limits and the potential constraints that maybe some of our residents are concerned about, particularly on, on that portion of the trail system, because we have uh, certainly previous studies that have shown there are some significant impacts to the environment and uh, but it might also identify some solutions. So the purpose of the motion is to, is to move the first phase so that we can get a clearer picture of uh, what we are up against and if this is feasible to go forward with or if this should be uh, something that we abandon and look at other alternatives to connect with our neighborhoods. And thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Anyone else want to weigh in on debate? Go ahead, Council Jolly.
Thank you. Uh, I'm excited about the potential for moving forward with a project like this that really shows vision in, in terms of what we see for the future of St. Albert and adding that connectivity certainly is something that residents um, will be able to appreciate for decades to come. I mean, I am so thankful that past city councils and, you know, I believe it was Mr. Cortash and Dr. Plain who were on council when the Children's Bridge um, project was approved. And I mean, I, I just can't imagine a downtown St. Albert and a river valley without our children's bridge. So really adding connectivity is showing vision into the future so that residents, you know, my, my grandchildren can bike down the trail um, in, in decades to come. So thank you for bringing this forward and I'll be supporting, moving forward with this project.
Go ahead, Council Hughes.
Oh, it was actually on. Okay, um. I pulled this off consent and I appreciate what you have to, your arguments, Council Mackay, but the, the concern is, I mean, it's three hundred thousand dollars when we know we're going into free limited budgets going forward. Um, and the concerns that were brought forward in the background are really what convinced me when they talked about the fact that there's a lot of environmental sensitivity, there's the slope issues. Um, and then there's also just the unknowns about what exactly will be happening with other developments. So really, until that project has been determined, it would be much smarter just to wait until we know what we're doing on that and then working around it, sort of working ahead. And then potentially having to change a bunch of things on the backend. So um, this is about, I just, I'm looking at the fact that we do have that shortfall coming forward. Um, and we don't have that much extra in the pot to make up for it. And uh, I, I'd also don't, even if we had this happen, I'm just not even sure when it would actually materialize at this moment. So that's why I just personally, I just, I can't support it. It's not, that is not a a great idea. It's just also just about the realities of the situation and um, whether or not it would really be a detriment to wait until hopefully the economy was in a different position. So, and the decisions about what's going on for development, for developments was actually made. I mean, if let's say that the next proposal also gets rejected by the council of the day, again, the entire alignment could be changed in another proposal afterwards. And if we're trying to work trails after the fact, then all the, all the work that we're putting into it may be for nothing. So anyway, that said, thank you.
Any more debate comments? Go ahead, Council Watkins. Oh, and I did see your hand up in the, in the participant. So that does work, council. I will see that.
Yeah, I, I'm not going to support it neither because I think we're going to mislead people to think that they're getting a trail connection here. And really, this is not a trail connection. This is a study about the possibility of creating a trail connection. And as Council Hughes said, and as staff has said, there are some environmental sensitivities down here. It's a very narrow, narrow area to work in. There's some slope stability things. So what this $300,000, my understanding is going to do is spend a bunch of money on studies. And those studies could prove that it could be too classy to build the trail. And there's also not any money to actually build the trail. I don't see that anywhere. I see $300,000 to do studies to look at the possibility of building a trail. And I think in these tight times when money is tight and we're trying to come in at, I, at least I am trying to come at a 0% tax increase and we're at like 1.1, adding another 300 grand for something that may or may not materialize is something I just can't support this year.
Council Broadhead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, this is always an interesting one because you don't get to build it until you do the engineering studies that allow us to get to where you need to go. So I too am convinced that the Red Willow Trail is the jewel that many people A move to St. Albert for and B that the residents, once they hear, are just truly enjoy year-round, quite honestly. And to make this connector, I think is in the best interest, not only of our community, but for all those who choose to use the trail system in, in the region. And yeah, it's a, it's a hard decision to make. It'll be interesting how the vote comes out at the end of the day, but sometimes you, in order to get to where you need to go, you have to make some tough decisions. And in this respect, I think there's, there's merit in doing the studies now that'll prepare us to get to where we need to go in the futures. So I too want to get to zero. But in this particular case, I think this, this work needs to be done and I'm going to support this particular motion.
Thank you, Council Broadhead. Is that everyone? All right, I'm going to add my two cents. First of all, I'm going to tell everyone that walking in here today, I was going to support any motion that was reducing what we're spending and not support any that were increasing what we're spending. That was my philosophy with two exceptions. One is an operating motion, one is a capital motion, and this is the capital motion. So just to be clear, approving this today will not increase the taxes. It just draw down on our capital reserve, which is at around $4 million. And I get that we have struggles in, in years going forward, but that's why we have reserves and we're not drawing them down completely, et cetera. And I'll let you guys just guess what the operating motions that I'm going to support is later. But I think the key and it has been said is years ago, probably, I can't remember, our council of the day made a very wise decision to build Red Willow Trail. It was visionary at the time and it was probably a risk at the time. But it is something our residents completely enjoy and it comes up number one all the time. Green spaces, trees, accessibility to the river, et cetera, is something our residents value. When you don't have a complete connection, we've got a problem. So I had actually probably whispered in Ken's year socially distance with a mask on, of course, that we should fund the whole project. What I, what I get frustrated with half the time is when we fund the studies and we don't carry through with with construction of that project. Millennium Park is a perfect example. Spend $100,000 on that study and we haven't built it yet. So I was trying to convince him to do the whole thing, but he's funded this study and that's fine. I, I do believe we didn't need to understand and put to rest some of the questions that are out there, the slope, the environmental sensitivity of it all. But I do believe that council that will make that decision will need to overcome some issues, but until we know the issues, we don't know how much that's going to cost to overcome and the priority it puts on that council of that day. So Council Mackay, I'm going to support your motion. Let's connect the north side of the river and make, make it enjoyable for all of St. Albert, not just private ownership. Thank you. To close, sorry, yeah, I was passing back to you.
I missed the pass of the baton. I dropped it, I guess. Anyways, yeah, no, I appreciate everybody's comments and I certainly as everybody knows, I would not want to view these as entirely sunk costs. I think there is a great opportunity for our community to utilize the studies and regardless of, of where it goes. And so I, I appreciate, I appreciate the worry in relation to the impact this might have on our capital funding. But it won't impact, as Mayor Heron has identified, it won't impact our operating budget for this year and in, at this particular time. So I appreciate the comments and I will wait for the vote.
All right, call for the votes. So I've got Mayor Heron in favor, Council Jolly in favor, Council Hansen in favor, Council Broadhead in favor, Council Watkins against, and Council Hughes against. Is that everyone? And are you in favor? So that passes by majority. All right. First one off our list. The next one, 4.2 was withdrawn, 4.3 passed on consent. Next one is 4.4, the CodeGen. Council Jolly, I'll have you read the motion and then we'll open it up for questions.
Okay, thank you. So I'm just scrolling down to that motion. Okay, that $60,600 be funded for the design of a cogeneration heat and power unit for service credit union places detailed by the 2021 Capital Charter CSS 005.
All right, I'm gonna not accept that quite yet until we go to questions. Any questions from anyone? Go ahead, Council Hughes.
Thank you. I, I pulled it. So I was just looking for a bit more clarity. So if this was built, because it says the recommendation is to wait until the expansion was actually done. But let's say that it was put in place and the expansion happens four years later or five years later. Is this basically lost? So can we actually use some of the same machinery or the same was already been purchased for the, to include it like as an add-on or is it basically like sunk cost? If we don't, if, if there wasn't expansion and this was put in place first?
Hi, Council Hughes, Christian Benson from Environment here. Yeah, I think you're on the right point. I mean, we typically design these types of units. You design them for a lifespan of 25, 30 years. The reason that we look to align with the aquatic expansion really was to make best use of the technology. It is difficult to retrofit existing mechanical systems with this type of technology. So we wanted to pair it with a potential expansion at Service Place.
So the, this, the intention of this, though, is that eventually it would pay for itself, right? Because we decrease the, the amount of electricity or the heat or something going on here. How, I don't, maybe it said it in the charter and please forgive me if I missed it. Do we know how long they're expecting before we'd make money on this or break even on it? What's the ROI? Or maybe Natalie's system, and I'm sorry I missed it, Natalie, if I did, I just wasn't the doctor.
Sure. Yeah, Christian is better than I do.
Go ahead, Christian.
Thanks. So yeah, there certainly is a return on investment. There's an efficiency when you have a combined heat and power unit that you wouldn't realize when both utilities are separate. The reason why we wanted to put forward this capital charter this year, and it's actually been on, on council's consideration for a few years, is to make use of an existing grant from the Municipal Climate Change Action Center. It's called the REC Grant, Recreation Energy Conserva- Conservation Fund, which would have paid up to 75% of a unit like this. So we're trying to make the best use of grant funding, but there's also an associated ROI. But as I stated before, it really does make sense to, to have a type of unit like this designed in conjunction with a potential expansion rather than a retrofit.
The entire cost of the unit isn't 60,000. That would be our contribution to it?
No, the, the 60,000 that's identified within the capital charter really is for design. These systems really need to incorporate some fairly complicated fitting within your existing service demand and within your existing mechanical systems within your building. So 60 would have been up to and including for a potential design for installation. And I believe the capital charter is up to a million for potential installation of the actual unit.
And how long is that grant that we're considering using in? They just have, I know that they can pull them anytime, but is there an expiration date on that right now that we know of?
So the grant that's administered through MCCAC, the REC Grant, we anticipate a few more years of life within that grant program. But as you mentioned, there is, it's first come, first served. So they could potentially pull it at any point in the near future. We suspect working with MCCAC that that grant money will be around for a few more years.
And do we know what the ROI is on it on the 1.4 million? Like if we're going to go down this train, we might as well figure this out. So do we know the ROI on it?
Yeah, we've, we've worked in conjunction with a retailer that does combined heat and power and they've produced an ROI. I'd have to pull it up, but typically when we put forward these capital charters, it's between 10 and 15 years for ROI with a usable lifespan of 20 to 25 years. So I have to get specific into the details for this specific unit, but I believe that was what the capital chart indicated.
And Natalie, is that what you interpreted? Because I'm thinking you, you had the motion, so you probably remember.
Yeah, I, I have another question about this, just because it, it's changed from the original charter a little bit. So I, I do have another question once.
Okay, that, that actually was all my questions. So thank you.
I can, I can just confirm that the $54 million from the province that went to MCCAC is not at risk. They have confirmed that, that the group can keep doing it. They've taken over energy efficiency Alberta, which costs a little bit of money, but the, the pot is still there as far as I know. Yep. I had Council Mackay and then I'll go to Council Jolly.
Actually, Council Hughes asked one of my questions. Thank you.
Okay, Council Jolly.
Thank you. So Christian, I, I do appreciate kind of best case scenario that this design would take place at the same time as the design of an aquatics expansion. I guess if there is no aquatics expansion, full stop, is this still a valuable project to go ahead with?
Council Jolly, I would suggest that the risk associated with retrofitting our existing mechanical systems at Service Place with a combined heat and power unit would be potentially that we'd be replacing equipment that has an existing useful life. So that would affect payback. The reason why we wanted to work in conjunction with an aquatic expansion is because we get a full realization of, of an ROI on this type of unit. So I'd have to work closely with the operations staff at Service Place. It was certainly something that we anticipated when we put this business case or sorry, capital charter forward in 2015, but you know, working in conjunction with our recreation staff, they indicated this would be a better alignment to realize a better ROI on this type of technology.
Thank you. Mayor Heron, kind of in light of that, I'm, I'm comfortable with withdrawing this motion.
Okay, thank you. So that's withdrawn. Just going on this topic, though, Christian, Kate, I see you're both there. Would this be, would a CodeGen unit be standard equipment if we were to build a new pool? A new REC center?
Mayor Heron, yeah, I mean, it's sort of in conjunction with our sustainable building policy. When we introduce new capital in the form of new buildings, we certainly would look for high energy efficiency technologies and combined heat and power is a proven technology that combines some of the efficiencies with natural gas and you're capturing both heat and electricity. So this is a technology that's used very common in industry and we would absolutely consider this technology for new, new builds.
Yeah, I would, I would hope so. So, all right, moving on. We are on 4.5, the Aitkinsdale Pickleball Courts.
Stop, okay.
You pulled it, Council Hughes.
No, actually, I, I pulled the other one, just the sound steady, not 4.5. So.
But it was pulled, so we haven't voted on it yet.
Yeah, so it's fine. Someone pulled it, I guess.
I'll let you, I'll let you read it in.
Yep. So just as a question, Mayor Heron, you do, is it what I wrote or is it the administration's understanding of the motion? No, it's not what I wrote. Okay. That the Aitkinsdale Pickleball Courts are completed with sound barrier fencing for $98,000 funded from the capital reserve.
All right, before I accept that, is there any questions from council? Council Mackay, go ahead.
I, I just have a question to administration, just for clarification. Initially, when this came in front of committee, there was, the $98,000 was to be funded through a Community Facility Enhancement Act or fund. And I might have the actual fund name wrong and I apologize. Are those monies absorbed now into the project and are no longer available for us if we were to pass this motion?
Do you remember the fund that we were going to use? It was in April. Oh, Diane's there? Okay. Well, it was financial, so I was going to the other Diane. All right, thank you.
I can start and then Morty can jump in if there's anything to add. So basically, there is $98,700 left within this project fund that could fund the acoustic panels. So there's no additional dollars required to carry forward with this particular part of the project.
There is?
There is not any additional funding required. It is already currently being held within the project.
Oh, I see. So we don't have to fund it out of the capital reserve then?
The, the project is still open and within this project charter, there is still remaining $98,700.
So Council Hughes, could you, would you be open?
I can say funded from the cap, can I just say funded from the project charter? Would that be, I'm just looking for the correct terminology, so it's clear. Would that be correct then, Diane or Diane?
Yes, that would be fine.
Okay, so can I change the wording then to be funded from the capital charter? All right.
Hey, any more questions? Council Broadhead, I saw your hand go up, and then Council Watkins.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a question in the background, or it said this mo, if this motion is approved, public work staff resources will be required to install and remove on a seasonal basis. Is that, is that a big expenditure? How, how tough is this? And can we buy something that lasts all year round or how does that play out if you don't mind just?
Yes, Council Broadhead, the cost annually to remove the paneling in the winter, it just protects the panel, paneling, the length of time that we'll be able, the lifespan of it. To remove it and then place it back up in the spring for the season is $2,400 a year.
Okay, and that's fair enough. If we're protecting our asset, I guess that's a good deal. So, thank you.
Ray, or sorry, Council Watkins.
I just had a couple of questions. What is the lifespan of these panels?
Council Watkins, I believe the lifespan is about 20 to 20 years, depending on the weather, of course.
Okay, and then just drawing my memory. If, has, has the, have the panels been proven to address the issues of the residents?
So in our research, these panels are quite, they're in the States is where we found most of our research on the use of these panels. What we understand from the manufacturer is that the panels reduce the sound impact by about 10 to 15 decibels, which reduces the sound perceived by the human ear by about 50%. So that's based on the research that we received from the manufacturer and we did call and did some research with some of the facilities that do have these panels up and they said it has mitigated the noise.
So do we have any proof that once we put these panels up, that the residents will be happy with the amount of mitigation?
We do not have proof that, you know, we do know, again, based on the manufacturer, that it will reduce the sound by up to 50% to the human ear. But again, we don't have any panels like this in our community or in any of our surrounding municipalities. Just the research that we received from the states in terms of it has made a difference in those communities in the States.
But we could, we could possibly be in a situation where we put them up and there could still be issues of, of noise complaints. Because we don't know for sure if these are Because we don't know for sure if these are going to address their issues or not.
We know that it will reduce some of the noise, but again.
We don't, noise will be reduced to the satisfaction of the residents who are concerned at this point, though. And then you see, there's an air photo that's in the package, and it shows the pickleball courts, and then it shows a bunch of red lines going to the houses. I guess that's to the north. Are those the houses and the residents that showed up to may have concerns today?
Yes, that is showing the closest homes to the pickleball courts, yes.
What about the ones, the house that's on the south side of the pickleball courts? Have we had complaints from that person? Because he seems to be relatively close to the courts also, he or she.
We've had complaints from the two residents that you heard from today that we've been working with those residents diligently over the past couple of years. And that's been the main focus of the complaints from the community, but again.
Nor if not that resident to the south asked for that air photo, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So we haven't heard anybody, any, any, any issues from the person to the south? And do you have a, do you have a plan there that just shows once again where this noise attenuation would be put up at?
So to your point, we haven't, we haven't had any other complaints that have been documented to us. And I don't have a photo handy, it would be two sides of the pickleball courts. So it would be the north and the east side of the pickleball courts.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, Counselor Hanson.
Thank you, and I think Counselor Watkins basically asked most of my questions. When you say Diane up to fifty percent, I guess that's what concerns me. I think fifty percent, if we knew for sure fifty percent. So I, I don't even know what that means, so it's just a faraway sound then of, of the balls? And does that, is that still problematic? What you're telling us, though, is from your research in the States, it's made a difference to surrounding areas. Generally speaking, are pickleballs built in residential areas, or do we know better now?
Thanks for your, your questions, Counselor Hanson. So I would say we know from the research that we've had in the States that it does mitigate or reduce the noise on pickleball courts. We also know that in the park areas, as our speakers, our residents spoke to, they're used to some noise in the parks. We have outdoor rinks and ball diamonds and all kinds of noise in the parks. So they were speaking to the different kind of noise that pickleball courts have. It's also significantly about the intensity. We've had huge growth in our pickleball community, and we have twelve courts there and six in the rows. So we are trying to look for new opportunities to look at for new pickleball development to try and spread out the use of pickleball courts. They are often built in communities. We are in a rather large, large park parcel. However, I think it's the intensity of the number of courts there and the, just the, the impact of our users. We have over six hundred pickleball members. It's grown exponentially over the last several years, as well as our residents have really taken to the sport as well.
So to follow up on that, in my conversations with some of the pickleballers from the club, there was a sense that they would be okay with starting at nine thirty, ten o'clock on a Saturday, but, but that doesn't appear to be happening. So is the pickleball club willing to make some compromises around this, even if the barriers go up?
So we have set the court hours at eight AM to nine thirty PM. We will work with the pickleball club, and if there is a desire for them to change, you know, the time, start time, we can look to that. However, it is also the residents in the neighborhood, it's not just the pickleball club. Many residents will come out to use the courts spontaneously. So that's why we did post court hours to try and keep the court hours reasonable.
Okay, and there's, these barriers are not available in Canada.
Currently, the supplier is out of the US that we found.
That's all I have.
You've got big flies in that house.
Is that you, Jackie?
It is my husband laying floor in the basement.
All right, any more questions before I accept the motion? All right, seeing no more questions, I will accept your motion, Counselor Hughes. Go ahead.
Thank you. So the good news is this is not going to pollute the capital reserve. We can take it out of the current capital charter. And the pickleball organization actually managed to get a grant for a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. So it is not even going to use up the current capital charter money. We, because they've actually, I've created enough money from this that we had surplus, which is what we could actually use this money for. But basically, when I look at this project, it's not about whether or not you're having one complaint or two complaints or ten complaints. It's about the fact that we put a high-intensity court into a residential neighborhood and unaware that to really complete the project, sound barriers had to be installed. That's what it comes down to, is that I'm sure that if this was built anywhere else in the future, the idea of having the sound barriers would have been put right into the capital charter. And other communities that do build them anywhere near residential neighborhoods, put the sound barriers up as a standard. And I think that if had administration been aware of the impact of the pickleball noise, especially at this level of intensity of usage, that they would have recommended it out of the gate. But it was the first time that this had been changed over, and there was no public consultation prior to. And so there was really a lack of awareness about the impact of how pickleball noise is different than many other sports. And so the people who live next door, who did not buy into this, they bought into having other facilities there. Those people who have this, had it put next to their home after they purchased their home, but having any ability to even have a say about it before it happened. So it's not the same as living beside a freeway and knowing that the freeway is going to be built, or buying it after it was already up. These are people who had it changed over after they already purchased their home. The noise level substantially changed. These are people who also have not been complainers. They have put up with a lot of noise in their backyard, without having any serious issues about it, and never contacted the city, which also shows that the impact of this noise is not the same as in other sports. So what I'm asking council to do today is just to recognize the fact that any time that we need to build a pickleball court, especially in a residential neighborhood, this sound barrier should be a standard, and that we just need to complete this project. And that it was just overlooked in the initial plan and design, and yes, it does cost a lot of money. But when you build things in the city, they cost a lot of money. We just spent three hundred thousand dollars in the study. So they cost what it costs. But when we discuss having something as simple as just like outdoor rinks, we don't say we're not going to put the boards up on the rinks because it costs too much money. We just say, okay, well, the boards go on the rinks, that's what it costs. We don't even question it. So, I mean, it's unfortunate that this has to come before council again, but just to come over for council at all, because ideally, this would have just been part of the design in the upfront. So I'm just asking council to just recognize the fact that this is just about completing projects to the proper satisfaction, to recognize the fact that this does impact people's lives. The pickleball noise is not the same as what other types of sports noise happens to be. And that, you know, if we can spend millions on millions in a sound barrier wall on St. Albert Trail, that surely we could spend this to recognize the fact that we built something in a neighborhood without consulting people that have told us after the fact that they're having ongoing issues of being able to enjoy living in their own home. And as I said, this isn't even going to affect the capital reserve in the end. So I'm just, I'm asking you guys for the support on this. That's it.
All right, I have Counselor Mackay, then Counselor Broadhead.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. And I'm going to support this. I supported this back when it came to committee initially, but I think there was some initial confusion in relation to the ninety-eight thousand dollars and that the fact that it was part of the hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar grant that the pickleball association was able, or pardon me, the pickleball club, although they are getting big enough, they could incorporate pretty soon. But that, that it was all, it was all part of the original project charter. And, and I believe staff did identify the need in that charter to put in sound attenuation, because they were certainly, in their background research, were aware that this was going to have some impact on nearby residents. So, I mean, this is just a continuation of the project, and it provides some clarity now that we actually have some pretty, I guess, vocal residents in relation to the impact that it's having on their lives. So I'm, I'm supporting it primarily because it was already included in the original project charter that a lot of the research has already been done in relation to the type of material that we will need. And, and this is just going forward, and it just basically clarifies the situation a little bit better.
Counselor Broadhead, then Counselor Watkins.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, quality of life in our community is worth something supporting. And one, one of the things that I think the city has learned out of this experience is that we need to be cognizant of what we add to our community and when it, there's, borrow one of Counselor Mackay's favorite statements, unintended consequences are, our intent was never to create a, a, a type of noise that would, that would be so intrusive that people couldn't enjoy their backyard. That was certainly not the intent. However, that was the outcome, and to mitigate that, now we need to do what's right. And sound does affect the quality of life. There's a lot of issues around sound that the city has made decisions that we're going to mitigate. And, and this is just another one. So what I would like to see out of this is some sort of a policy around the installation of recreational activities and what does and what does not sort of establish a standard of, of sound. And when we breach that standard, then we do mitigation, and if it's less than that, then we can feel confident that it's not going to create a problem. So, but having said that, here we are, and certainly support where you're going with this, Sheena, or Counselor Hughes.
Counselor Watkins.
Yeah, I'm not going to support it, and it's not because I don't have empathy for these people, and it's not because I don't think that there's an issue with the sound. It's because we don't know if this is going to be satisfactory to them. And what we've heard is that we're going to have a fifty percent reduction in sound. And who knows what fifty percent reduction in the sound is? Is that going to be acceptable to them? What I heard were concerns that this is going nonstop, tick, knock, knock, tick, tick, from nine AM till ten thirty at night. Well, that's not going to reduce this problem. You're still going to hear tick, talk, talk, tick, tick, ninety percent all day till nine, ten, thirty at night. It's just going to be half as loud, and I don't know if that half as loud is going to be acceptable to the people. So I, I would almost rather see, we had a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars. I'd almost rather see thirty thousand dollars spent on a noise study and have those people come and get some buy-in on them that this reduction is going to be satisfactory to them before we spend a hundred grand and maybe put up a wall and still get complaints that it's still annoying. So I'm not going to be supporting it at this time.
Thank you. Anyone else? I will just weigh in that to be clear, where, if we pull it out of the project charter or the reserve, it's still taking money out of the reserve, because if this doesn't get funny, funded, project charter closes and the money goes into reserve. So what do you say, one half, a dozen, whatever? That's right. You know what, depending how the vote goes, I think I could probably be convinced to do the, the sound study that Counselor Hughes has put forward if this one fails, so I'll just kind of see where this goes and probably consider it at that time. Counselor Hughes to close.
Okay, I'm going to try my best on this one here. What we do know is you have four point four million currently in the capital reserve, and it's not going to affect the four point four million. So we can make it higher or lower, but it's not, the four point four million is not being removed from the surplus if this comes forward. This is actually money that we have allocated for this project, so we have it available for this project. The concern about the buy-in or the assurance, this is what we do know. Is that the same residents, when they've had to deal with noise, ongoing noise from all the other sports, have not complained. So if the noise is at a more tolerable level, they've not complained. They've come forward and said they're looking for this solution. So if we actually come forward and say we're doing this solution, and there's really no other solutions available, they, there's nothing for them to complain about. So the idea that they aren't going to complain, or they're going to complain later, I think is making assumptions about what they might do that I think would be unfair to them. They haven't said we want the noise to go away to nothing. They've just simply said they want the noise to be reduced so that they can actually enjoy their backyard. The difference between a sixty-eight decibels and fifty decibels is significant. I've had generators on at sixty-eight decibels. It is loud. It is annoyingly loud. And that's not talking about pickleball. That's like a generator, which is constantly, and it is loud. You have to yell over it. At fifty, it's the same as someone talking. It's an entirely different level of noise. So should the dripping noise be annoying? Sure, but if it's annoying and loud, it, it becomes overwhelming. Reducing it by fifty percent makes it much easier. It's much more muted. It's almost as if you have your windows closed all the time, or having more than one set of windows closed actually to do the difference. So what we're hearing is that the manufacturers and the communities that have implemented this have had the amount of people complaining has gone down significantly, if not entirely, that the residents have said they believe this is going to help, that they are, have lived beside loud sports for their, their entire lives. They've lived in those houses without complaint. So all they're asking for is just to make it more bearable. And so that, that's what I'm just, I'm asking for is just, just to recognize that this, this is a solution that they have, that we have the money set aside to accommodate, and that this is affecting people's lives. This is just about completing a project. If we were to build a pickleball court anywhere else in the city, and it was anywhere near homes, the concept of not putting up a sound barrier, I don't even think would be discussed at this moment. And staff have said that if they were to build another pickleball court of this intensity, they would not put next to residential. They would have a much bigger barrier, which in and of itself acknowledges the fact that putting it beside residential has negative consequences for those people beside it. And so the bare minimum we can do is just to address the problem and complete the project and say we are doing our best we can, and if we don't put this up, we can't say that. You can't say we're putting up signs to tell people not to use it and actually never enforce those signs. And then say we did the best we can. That's not the case. We do the best we can when we actually take steps to reduce the noise levels, and this is the step we can do, and we have the best of our knowledge, this will make a noticeable difference to those people's lives. And it will also decrease any animosity between people using the court, whether it's the pickleball club or others, and the people who have to live beside it. So I'm just, I'm asking, please, just consider, I don't want to spend ten thousand dollars for a sound study just to confirm that needs to be done. If we were to build this beside anyone else's house today, would you not allow this to happen? Would you say we're going to build this in insert neighborhood here in the same distance before, and would we also not put up a sound barrier in that neighborhood? Because if we put it in that neighborhood, we should retrofit it for this one. Thank you.
Great. Call for the vote? Sorry. Did mine go? I've got Counselor Broadhead in favor, Counselor Mackay in favor, Counselor Hanson in favor, Counselor Hughes and Mayor Heron, and then we've got Counselor Jolly against, and Counselor Watkins against. Is that everyone? All right, so Counselor Hughes, I assume with that passing, you'll pull four point seven, the sound study? Okay, so withdraw PM zero three one. And now we're on to PM zero two eight, the facility, water, and energy audit. Counselor Jolly, I'll get you to read it in.
That fifty thousand five hundred dollars be funded to procure an external consultant, consulted to conduct facility, water, and energy audits for select city-owned facilities as detailed by the twenty twenty-one capital charter CSS zero zero eight.
All right, any questions on that one? Go ahead, Counselor Hughes.
Sorry, I was just looking for clarification. I wasn't necessarily against it, Counselor Jolly. Which facilities would we be doing? And maybe it said it in the other background, in the other document, but I'm just going to ask now. Which facilities were we going to be doing on this? For the Hi, Kristen.
Hi, Counselor Hughes. We have a facility list of ten of our largest facilities in our capital envelope, so the ones that the city owned. I am just pulling up the document, but it'll be fairly familiar to you, places like Service Place, St. Albert Place. I am just pulling up the document, but it'll be fairly familiar to you. Places like Service Place, St. Edward Place, Fountain Park Pool, Dromah Ginnla Arena. And as I'm waiting to pull up my list, there's, yeah, it's the same 10 that we had previously scoped out in our 2015 audit.
So we've done this before, and we're doing it again?
Yeah, our last audit was completed in 2015. And since that period, we actually implemented quite a few of the recommendations. In addition to checking to see what, what sort of left on the energy efficiency inventory checklist, there's been new technologies and introductions in that period of time, which may make for a more compelling case for, for the city to implement new energy efficiency measures ultimately to reduce costs.
Um, couldn't we just implement them without the audit?
We are, you know, we're in the process. We have a staff member that was granted to the city through an MCCAC grant for municipal energy specialist. We are slowly working through our facility listing. However, a lot of, a lot of the larger facilities do really take an external consultant with the expertise in mechanical engineering to provide us with a more compelling business cases to why we would implement larger scale capital improvements. So currently, myself and my staff do do facility audits. We focus primarily on low or no cost improvements. And these large external reviews and consultations really help provide a more compelling business case for large capital improvements.
And if I can just add to that, Counselor Hughes, it provides a more concise plan with a, with a little bit more holistic look. Right now, like there's new technologies that, that change on an annual basis. And so we have wind of some, we don't know all. And this just provides expertise from outside in industry to provide an overall stronger recommendation. So we have a better purchasing kind of focus. And we are looking at the overall pieces that can provide us the best bang for our buck.
Okay, thank you. So it was in the unfunded. So when would be the usual timing to have another audit done? Is it like every five years or every seven years? Or what is a typical scheduling?
Yeah, I think you hit the nail on the head. It's typically every five years. With this charter we put forward, it'll actually be at the six-year period where we haven't seen, you know, a substantial review of our efficiency measures within the city in that period. So it'd have been six years since our last audit.
Are we expecting, I am, to get, I guess, on the last audit, what was the ROI on the changes that we made on the last audit? Do we have that idea?
Yeah, so our last audit was, was quite interesting, included up to 10 measures per facility. And I did finally pull up a list here. So we'll be looking at places like Bowdery, Fire Hall 1, Fire Hall 2, Fire Hall 3. I guess Fire Hall 1 would be off the list within new construction, but Fountain Park Pool, Jack Craft, Drumah Ginnland Kinex, Liggett Place Transit, Maloney Place, and then Service, St. Edward Place, and Aitkenstale Clubhouse. So those are our largest facilities at this time. What they offer is typically a recommendation of up to 10 improvements, which have all corresponding return on investments. And they're ranked based on capital cost and return on investment. So typically what we saw during our last audit was things like LED light conversion, which we've done in a lot of our facilities. Those payback and ROI on LEDs, you know, between one and two years, with a lifespan of up to 20 years, depending on the fixture. So we, we have implemented quite a few of the recommendations from the last audit. But we do really anticipate that there's a lot that we're missing based on what industry trends are, what new technologies are available, and just what the new sort of availability of these technologies is to, we can apply to our, to our buildings.
So if the ROI, I'm guessing, I'm guessing the last one was around 50,000 as well, right? For some reason, I feel like it was higher, but it was around 50 as well?
It was actually a little bit higher. We're at an advantage because we have an existing template for a consultant to work off of. So a lot of these energy efficiency audits, there's a ton of background work based on, you know, when was the facility commissioned? When were the last, most recent improvements brought into place? What's the existing lifespan? That work is done on the, on the front end. So now we're looking at an update. An update is substantially cheaper than a full-scale audit that we implemented in 15.
So did we get, I know you're talking, we got the money back on the changeovers, but do you feel we also got the money back on the initial audit? Like in the savings, we, so this in theory would pay for itself as well, is what I'm trying to say, right?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, just the fact that it provides prioritization. It also helps us, you know, and this is a bit more on the facility side on public works, but helps them schedule work as well. Through these audits, we also have the ability to potentially delay capital improvements if there's an existing life on some of the the facility pieces. So if we do an audit, you know, our prior, we could say the roof is due, you know, 25 years is when we thought the roof was supposed to be due. During this audit cycle, they say, look, looks like your roof's in good condition. You can probably delay for another five to 10 years. Or whatever the case is, that's very similar amongst all of the envelope of the building. So they'll either identify a requirement for a quicker replacement on some of the capital pieces for a building, or they may say, look, you have a longer lifespan. So it'll help delay some of the expected costs to some facilities.
A great, a great example of what we've implemented or currently are implementing right now is we're putting in some fixtures at Service Place. It's called Real Ice, and that it just changes how we create ice at Service Place. It'll start saving approximately 10,000 a year per ice it gets implemented on. So again, that was just one technology that we got wind of and interviewed some additional municipalities to understand how they were using it. So it's just, it's, it's putting more expertise in the city of what we can implement to reduce the operating costs.
Okay, I'm out of questions. Thank you.
All right, who's next? Have any hands up? No hands up. Anyone? Go ahead, Counselor Watkins.
My question was just, the purpose of the audit is to find ways to save energy. And basically you said recommend large-scale capital improvements to save costs. So we're trying to find ways to save money here. So we're probably not going to spend a large capital improvement this year, even if we do the audit, because we don't have the cash. So, and then you mentioned like things, you said like an LED light conversion. And, you know, not to be sarcastic, but I really don't need an audit to know that an LED light's going to save me more than another kind of light, right? Because everybody's place replaces them in their house and that. So I'm just kind of wondering what kind of large-scale capital improvements are recommended as a result of these audits? What would that price reach be? Are you talking something from as little as $20,000 would be recommended to save? Or are these, like you said, you said large-scale capital improvements. I'm thinking in multimillion dollar projects. So once again, I'm
Oh, I don't, for sure, Counselor Watkins. I don't think it would extend up to multimillion dollar projects. I think you can get as small as a couple thousand dollar changes to how we operate things. So just changes in behavior, for instance, to, again, these real ice fixtures, we were able to get a grant for them. They have a one-year payback. And they're roughly like a $30,000 implement, but we get a roughly a $20,000 grant. So it costs us $10,000 to do it. So for us, a one-year payback. So there's different scales of what they can implement. On, like, we're doing a recommissioning of the HVAC system at Mahoney Place, which can start to save kind of energy costs, et cetera. So it's providing some of those recommendations that are just not common and less common sense and looking at technologies that are new and emergent. So I think it's probably more, some things could be handled within operating budgets today of how we manage our facilities versus some may require capital investment down the line, but it's hard to tell until we really start digging into where we're at today.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that answer.
Counselor Hanson, has your hand up?
Thank you. So I guess that piggybacks a little bit of the question that I had, Christian or Kate. So if we go ahead with the audit and we come up with some compelling data around how we're using our energy and water, does that give us a leg up in terms of applying for MCCAC grants towards the projects that we want to implement? Is that something that we can do?
100%.
Okay, so the investment is to, the investment at the end of the day is to make more than I'm going to say $50,000 through some implementation of projects and possibly get grants with the data that we, that we are able to provide. That's fair to say then?
That's correct.
Yeah, Counselor Hanson, a lot of the MCCAC grants do require what's called a scoping audit prior to the implementation of an energy efficiency improvement. So yeah, this would suffice as a, as a scoping audit for, for the most part. I mean, there has to be a corresponding reduction that's been calculated. And these largely are the, what get produced, so we can apply for these grants.
So if we don't have this data, we're completely at a disadvantage in terms of applying for grants?
Sometimes we have to actually do a scoping audit prior to an improvement without these types of, these audits. So we would have to, you know, invest per project if, if there was something we identified to get, you know, a corresponding grant. We may have to invest pre. This, this actually takes the legwork out of that.
Okay, thanks so much.
Any more questions? All right, Counselor Jolly, I'm going to accept your motion. Go ahead.
Thank you. I'm going to start with quoting Counselor Hughes. And you said, in theory, this will pay for itself. And I think in Counselor Hanson's questions and this Polkovsky and Mr. Benson's answers about the MCCAC grants, that, that statement is absolutely true. Mayor Heron, you also kind of commented earlier, asked earlier about whether, you know, we can make, look at these, 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 these audits and apply them to new facilities. So we don't make the same mistakes that we did in the past. You know, a new rec facility, is it going to have a code gen system in it? And, and that's the kind of thing that comes out of these audits. So I think that's really important to consider in funding this type of a project. And ultimately, our, our most important legacy is going to be the actions we take to safeguard the environment. And this is an investment in that. When we look at our strategic priorities, environmental stewardship is right up there. When we look at our pillars of sustainability, environmental stewardship is right up there. And this type of project really supports our values, our strategy. And like has been mentioned, it opens up opportunities for grants and saves us money, which is great all around. So that's why I brought this forward, and I hope to see support for it. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else on debate? Go ahead, Counselor Watkins.
Yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to support it. And I think it's a good idea. But I think it's key that we pursue alternative energy initiatives because they work financially standalone, not because they work with grants and subsidies. And that's what I hear a lot of, well, we should put this money here because we're going to get a grant and a subsidy for this, or a grant and a subsidy for that. Or we should give this money here because we can get a grant or a subsidy. We have to make sure that these things work standalone without the subsidies and grants. The things we're doing when these alternative energy fronts, because we're going to end up in a situation similar to the buses, you know? Case in point, we touted all these things about electric buses. And they were great, and they were financially feasible, as long as we were getting a huge chunk of money from the government. But now that we're not getting a huge chunk of money from the government, we're going back to buying diesel buses. So I guess it's just a word of caution when we're looking at these alternative sources, that they, they stand alone and not require some subsidy from some other level of government for them to continue to work and then for them to continue to operate.
All right. Thank you. Counselor Broadhead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Counselor Jolly, for bringing this forward. It's a, it's a laudable motion, and I'd love to support you on this. But we're in, we're in the year of the COVID, and I came into this budget saying that I'd have to be convinced to add money to the budget. And the thing that bothers me here is, as good as this is, if the project didn't pass muster with our administration. And, and to that end, I believe that, not that this work shouldn't be done, but perhaps it doesn't meet the line for work that needs to be done this year. And that's what I'm struggling with right now. And it's not that the work isn't valuable. It's the question is whether it needs to be done this year or not. And like I say, if it didn't pass muster with admin, I'm struggling with it. But thanks for bringing it forward. I'll listen to close.
Anyone else? Did I see any hands up? I'll add, because quite often I hate voting against anything that's related to the environment, but exact same arguments as Counselor Broadhead. I've already broken my rule once about voting for spending more money, thanks to Counselor Hughes and her pickleball courts. But for me, this was because administration didn't recommend it. And not that it's not important, it just needs to wait for another year. And I also do believe that the, the skill set in our environment department probably can identify some of these upgrades that we can do in the short term. So can't support it now. I hate saying no, but for this one, it's about priorities. So Counselor Jolly to close.
Thank you. I guess just to end, I don't think there's any greater priority than protecting our environment for our kids. And that's why I'm supporting this, to get this rolling and to get these projects going as soon as we can. That's all. Thank you.
Thanks. Call for the vote. So I have Counselor Hughes against, Counselor Watkins against, Counselor Mackay against, Counselor Hanson in favor, Counselor Jolly in favor, Counselor Broadhead against, and Counselor, Mayor Heron against. So sadly fails. It's funny how if I'd passed, I would have rejoiced. Like, this is so hard. All of these motions are hard. We are now moving on to operating. It's 10 to 40. You guys want a quick break before we go into operating? Okay, why don't we reconvene back in our chairs at 4 o'clock? Okay? Okay?
It's going good. I always have.
You know what, Sean, I'm going to have to change my. Is different now. All right, start my video back up. Where are we? We're just starting operating. 5.1 passed on consent. We are now on 5.2, which is motion 007. Let me just pull it up. I'll read it, that the operating budget be reduced by 57,600 to reduce tourism supports temporarily. All right. Counsel, as I was reading the backgrounder, it said at the very bottom that a reduction of 24,450 for 221 would just take away the printing of the must-see guides and the maps, and it would not provide airshow transportation for this year. So I, and as I said in my comment, that I might amend this after the airshow and snowflake, all those questions. And just, so what I'm going to do is I'm going to, that the operating budget be reduced by 24,450 to reduce tourism supports temporarily, and that's fine. And then we'll ask, let's ask questions on my intention and et cetera. Okay, go ahead, Counsel Mackay, then Counsel Hughes.
I apologize, I have a question. I'm always confused by, like, it's just fuzzy, temporarily. What does that mean? One year?
One year.
So can we, is that what temporarily means, one year? Do we have to specify that?
Yeah, actually, it's interesting, because it was a temporary motion, the entire thing, and then in the backgrounder, it said no longer offer park and ride onward. And I was very clear that that was not what I intended. I wanted it to be just for 2021. But I do believe, and I don't have the breakdown of all this right now, that we should not be printing the must-see guide or maps. We had a, we had a motion quite a few years ago to lower the, we just sent it back to admin, lower the budget by another percent or whatever that was. And they came back with, we will no longer print the rec guide. And I don't, we never got one complaint about that. So I honestly think we should permanently stop printing the must-see guides and the maps. But let's just call this a temporary thing for now. Sean, you and I could talk about this later, because I don't know, I don't know how to divide that all up. So let's just call it a temporary for 2021. I just would like to stop printing the must-see guides, the maps, and don't do the airshow bus, and that would be a reduction in 24,450. Does that answer?
Yeah, I guess so. I guess, I mean, if you got temporary and you got a time limit of 2021, that's either redundant or not. I mean, you could just say not for 2021. But I'm just, I don't want to argue over words. I just worry all about temporarily.
I think all the service level reductions, if it's a temporary, correct me if I'm wrong, Kevin, it meant for just this budget year, right?
Generally, yeah, unless it's, unless specified otherwise by, excuse me, remember, Counsel.
All right, I just know words matter sometimes when you go back on it. And just as long as we're clear is all. So as long as we have, when we say temporarily, it means this year budget year only, pending any other information in relation to the motion.
Okay, but Counsel Hanson, your hand went up and then down. Okay. Any more questions? Counsel Hughes? Then Counsel Watkins.
Thanks, Mayor. So you wanted, because I look at the tourism guide, the full bit maps and the other, that comes to 26,000. So that's what you wanted, or 24,000?
The backgrounder said 24,000.
I'm looking at the BIR.
I'm looking at the backgrounder.
I guess, I guess now I'm going to look to Sean, because I got different numbers, yeah.
Yeah, so let me clarify. So in the BIR that we sent to Counsel Hughes, we had 13,000 for the airshow. And then we had an additional 10,000 for the tourism guide for 23,000. Then we had maps for 26. And then in the, the service level reduction business case, let me just pull that up here quickly. We had must-see and do for 10, maps for three. Edmonton airshow, so the numbers add up in both the same. It looks like 13 for airshow, 10 for must-see and do, that's 23, and then three for maps, that's 26 in both.
Okay, so there must be a typo in the, in the backgrounder for the motion, because it said, clearly said 24,450. So what is, what is the number, Counsel Hughes? 26?
26,000 even.
26,000 even. There we go. We just found 1,500 bucks.
You're welcome. That was my question. Thank you.
Counsel Watkins, you had your hand up, right?
What, like, it said in the, in the background, that we handed out 10,000 guides? We actually handed out 10,000 guides. It's distributed throughout Alberta. Or were, did we like send 5,000, 2,000 to somewhere and send 1,000 somewhere else and told them to hand them out, or?
Yeah, so through you, Madam Mayor, to Counsel Watkins. So it's a, it's a bit complicated. So if we actually stopped printing the guide, the guide itself is distributed across 30 visitor centers throughout the province that we have agreements with. So we distribute a certain amount at our visitor services center in St. Albert on the south side of the trail there. And the majority of the, the see and do guides are actually distributed throughout the 30 visitor centers in the province, wherein visitors can pop in and get information to plan trips for their summer vacations and things to that effect. So they are distributed. And so if we did stop printing them, we would probably have to get creative about how we could deliver that material, not only to our own visitor center, but to the 30 throughout the province as well.
Okay, because you said we have an agreement with the 30 visitor centers, and the agreement is to what? We provide them with this document, and they provide us with their document. Is that kind of the agreement?
That's right. So our visitor center hosts information from the other 30 across the province and vice versa.
So you're saying if we quit, if we quit printing them, then what? We don't get 30, we don't get the other people's from around the province, or?
No, we would still get theirs. We would just have to think of creative delivery for our own, whether it's through online transition, whether it's through QR codes, whether it's, you know, there's probably a number of things we could do. We've touched base with our, with our comms group internally to see what we could do, but it would have a, an impact on not just our visitor center, but the others as well, as far as getting information to the public about what's to see and do in St. Albert.
You know, we heard a lot from the focus groups and cafes and everything about economic development and how important it was. Is there any measure, or do we have any metrics that showed that we gave out 10,000 of these guides and they brought a bunch of business here, they didn't bring a bunch of business here, or we don't know if they brought a bunch of business here? Do we have any metrics on the effectiveness of the map or the guide?
No, we're, I would say we're working to develop KPIs in that regard to see if we can, I don't know, whether it's through promotion codes, or whether it's through QR codes or whatever, to see what we actually generate so we can monitor, or I guess quantify that for council. But as of right now, the only metric that we have is how many guides we deliver.
Yeah, so what, and, and you know, I guess, I guess I'm just trying to ask a lot of questions about this, because I, so you distribute them to all these other visitor centers. Somebody rolls into a visitor center in Bowdoin, and they see our brochure there, and they grab it. So we don't even know if we give 1,000 to Bowdoin, if they just threw them in the garbage at the end of the year. Right? We don't know.
We hope that's not happening.
Right? We have no data on nothing about this. Okay, okay, thanks.
So go ahead. Sean, did you have more?
Nope, I was just going to say we do keep track of where they go and how many we distribute with the expectation that they get handed out, and that people actually utilize them to the full extent. But as far as key performance indicators, where we can, you know, quantify the exact result by economic activity generated in our community as a direct result of that guide. No, we don't have that. We are working towards that, but currently we don't.
Okay, sorry, just to follow. So do you think that's something that's possible to even measure, that these things work or not, or you think that's going to be hard to even do?
No, I think there are ways you could do it, with like, you know, a couple of examples stated around promotional codes. If, you know, someone were to get drawn into a restaurant or a local hotel in the summer of 2020, and they use the promo code, you know, St. Albert Summer Fund 2020, you know, then we would know that they drew it specifically from that guide. I mean, there are certainly things we could research and play with, but right now, we're not doing that.
Okay, okay, thank you.
All right, Counsel Hanson has your hand up.
Thanks. I was going to wait to talk about this in debate, but from my conversations with the chamber, there is a high demand for both the recreational trail and street maps. And the tear-off maps are used continuously when visitors come into the center looking for specific businesses, places to eat, et cetera. So, you know, they're the ones running it, so they see it. So might, we might not have hard numbers on the effects of what that material gives us, but they are in high demand.
Any more questions? All right, see none. I'm going to accept my own motion, I guess. Weird. I'm going to start with, this is the first of the many that I have that, I need to remind everybody that these were the suggestions from our staff. These were the service level reductions that were sent to council for our consideration, if we wanted to lower the 1.1. This one's a small one. I guess it's only 24, $26,000 now. There's three in here that are over 100. We need to find $1 million in savings if we want to get to zero. So this is going to be tough, and this is going to take commitment from council to, if that's your goal. This one, as I said, when I originally submitted the motion, I was kind of unclear. I wanted to talk to Sean and figure out how this would impact the chamber. So hence, I completely changed it to just 26,000, not the full, whatever it was originally, 57, I think, because I didn't want to affect the operations of the Chamber of Commerce and the visitor center. So that's still intact. They might not have ripoff tear-off maps. But, you know, I just Googled St. Albert Tourism. Great website. The must-see guide is on the website. I don't know about you, but when I travel, I Google. I Google my maps. I Google my information of what attractions to see. I do my research. I don't think I've walked into a visitor center and picked up a guide on Bowdoin, ever. So this is a decision about whether we're going to slowly pick away at the operating budget. This is one recommendation from our staff. I'm not going to go into a lot of conversation about it. Anyone else? Counsel Hughes.
Thank you. I'm listening to Counsel Hanson and, and because, I'm going to call it intel, because, because you know, CEO pretty well there, right? I'm thinking, would, about, would you take an amendment to decrease it to 23,000 and we continue to print the maps? Would that, we, like, so instead?
Counsel Hughes, I think we could absolutely, if somebody walks into the visitor center, wants a map, we can, we can assist them with a Google map. So no, we got to stop with the printing of paper. And they might have some leftovers. But I appreciate the sentiment.
I'm just, I'm wondering if I can put an amendment to your motion, then we can just call it out.
Really?
Yeah, well, it's just, it's, I'm looking at the maps, and I, I'm just, I'm thinking when people go in, they just, they need to have the ability to actually, they take the paper out with them if they want to know where they're going, I guess is what I'm thinking.
It's up to you, if you want to put an amendment for it, go ahead.
Yeah, yeah, I do. I know it's 3,000, but it's not the 3,000, it's the actual physical product. And it'll come, so it would be that it is reduced by 3,000 less so that we can print the maps.
23, okay. So, did you get that? Any conversation about the amendment? Seeing now, I'm going to call for the Seeing none, I'm gonna call for the vote on the amendment. All those in favor? I have got Mayor Heron against, councillor Hughes in favor, councillor Jolly, Hanson, Mackay against, Watkins in favor, Broadhead against. Back to the original motion?
Okay.
Debate on the original motion?
Yeah, sorry, I'm just trying to get us for a second here. I, I think that the only thing we need to be aware of, I'm gonna support this. But we need to be aware that anything we say for temporary reduction means we're guaranteeing that tax increase the following year. So if we reduce it by a hundred thousand temporarily, next year, it automatically goes and increases the operating budget by a hundred thousand out of the gate. So we have upwards of over three hundred thousand dollars of temporary reductions, but every temporary literally means the tax increase is going to go up at the same amount for twenty twenty-two. So it's a very short-term respite. It's better if we actually look for things that are permanent. But with that said, I'm all supportive for this, but we need to be aware of the long-term implications of what we're doing. That's it.
Good points. Councillor Hanson.
I'm, I'm just going to I'm just going to read out some of the notes that I made around my conversation with the Chamber of Commerce, because I think it merits part of this debate. And it's a little bit of knowledge. It's a little bit about the visitor center too. Visitor Center Welcome Center serves not only visitors to St Albert, but also new residents to our community. It is a one-stop shop where residents can find many of the services that are offered by our not-for-profit and businesses. The chamber is also looking, willing to look at additional services that might change their course of business that would work for us. The comments are, as COVID restricts travel outside of our province, we anticipate seeing more people coming into our community. The visitor center is an ideal place to welcome them, welcome them and help them explore St Albert. The visitor welcome center also supports visitors virtually through social media as well as in person. There is a demand, as I said, for both the recreational trail and street maps. Since June, the visitor center has handed out over a hundred and fifty recreational trail maps as well as a hundred and fifty street maps. The tear-off maps are used continuously, as mentioned. Lifestyle Expo, the chamber pays Service Credit Union, placed thirty thousand to hold the Lifestyle Expo, which promotes our business and our not-for-profits. The city sponsorship to that is one thousand dollars. Snowflake Festival, the city sponsored the horse and buggy, six hundred and fifty dollars, and also sponsors in-kind park and ride street, park and ride and street closure. The chamber investment after all of that sponsorship, sponsorship is ten thousand dollars approximately. All of that to say that whether you reduce it by twenty-three thousand or twenty-six thousand. These are the small things that make a big difference for people coming into our visitor centers. And you know, we might not be able to quantify what the visitor center is doing for us and how people navigate the visitor center and what they, they tend to use. But this to me is economic development. This, they're the, they're the first face of contact for a lot of people that come into our city. We don't operate it, the chamber does, so we're not on the ground to see that. So I guess all that to say is I am not going to vote in favor of this reduction, because I think this is part of the economic development. And we don't even have to operate it. Essentially, it's being operated by somebody else and they're doing the work for us. And I think it's apropos for a city to make some small investment into that.
Any more comments? Go ahead, councillor Watkins.
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna support it. I think a lot of people are on their, like personal device, their phone, they're finding all sorts of information. But I'm only gonna support it for a year. And I think that, you know, there's probably not going to be a lot of travelers in twenty twenty-one, or at least the beginning of twenty twenty-one. If we see travel, it'll be in the latter part of twenty twenty-one, I think. So for one year, I think we're good cutting it back. But twenty twenty-two, I think you should bring it back. I, I don't want to stop it for good, because we heard so much about economic development from the chamber and from people in the, in the cafes. And how important it is to get the economy moving again. Economic development is going to be important, so. I, I don't want to end it for good, but I will support it in twenty twenty-one, because I do think there would be a lot less travel. And also, that will allow us, hopefully over twenty twenty-one, when we don't have it. Economic development can look at how we can measure the effectiveness of, of these things we're handing out. And, and I know we have, you know, Jackie presented some good information on the effectiveness of it from the chamber. But we don't know about this deal that we have with the other twenty visitor centers and if, you know, this, this kind of data is on the decline or not, like, we don't even know that, like, you know, like you say, we, we assume most people are going to their phone and finding directions as opposed to pulling out a piece of paper and driving down the street and trying to look at it, but we, it'd be nice to have some data on that, so. I'm gonna support it, like I said, for, for one year.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, I'll close as fast as I can. Still supporting the visitor center by thirty-two thousand dollars. Didn't take anything away from that. I'm not reducing the economic development budget specifically, I'm just tourism only. That's all that this is targeted at. I, I believe that councillor Watkins just said one year, but I'm actually listening to councillor Hughes's thoughts about one-year reductions and then this bike the following year, so. I do think we should have a conversation, Sean, maybe about how we support tourism going forward. And honestly, ten thousand dollars in guides is a great place that we could save a few dollars, and that might, that probably should be permanent, but not gonna make those kind of decisions today, so. Looking forward to the way you guys all vote. And I'm calling for it now. That is one, two, three, four, five, six in favor, one against, and that's councillor Hanson against, the rest in favor. Okay. Five point three passed on consent, the Athlete and Artist Development Grant. The next one is zero zero nine. The FCSS contributions. Cheryl, I, sorry, because we started up right away and I didn't have time to type it. So council, if you read my motion, it says that the operating budget be permanently reduced by three hundred thousand to meet only the mandatory twenty percent municipal FCSS contribution. That's obviously not the case, we're the, the three hundred thousand doesn't get us to, to twenty percent, so I'm just gonna I'm gonna amend it to say that the operating budget be permanently reduced by three hundred thousand dollars coming from our I can hear Cheryl typing as I go, coming from our FCSS municipal contribution. Just kind of takes out the twenty percent, just for clarity. Because if we, if we were to say twenty percent, we'd be cutting it by seven hundred thousand, so. Yeah. So before I take your question, Ellie, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say a few things. Because there is confusion on the intent of this motion between Katrina and I and council and everybody. I'm actually, and, and we have not had time as a council to say, should we cut it all from city-run programs, or should we do a across-the-board reduction in all of, of the different service areas? I'm going to suggest that we vote on this without the intent completely understood today, and we very quickly at the January Community Standing Living Committee, figure out where that three hundred thousand comes from. And then maybe we can get some input from CSAC as well. Because I, we could spend the next hour debating whether it should come from this program or that program, but this is a budget meeting, not a program meeting, and I think we should just say unless you guys really need to know before you vote, but I'm just gonna say, why don't we do the three hundred thousand? And then have a good wholesome discussion with a little bit more information and input in January, and then if, then if we don't like it, then we can scratch it if we want, but is everyone comfortable with that? I'm seeing hands go up, so go, I'll go with councillor Watkins and then councillor Hanson. Oh, sorry, councillor Jolly was first, and then councillor Watkins and then councillor Hanson.
Thank you. I guess, just my, thank you for explaining that. I know it's been just awful in the media, thinking that you're trying to cut programs. But can you expand on your comment about the Recovery Task Force possibly kind of making recommendations? I believe that was in your original kind of, not, not in your motion, but in the comments relating to your motion.
Yeah. Yeah, and that was probably part of the confusion, because I thought it was an across-the-board cut, and that would include some of our outside agencies as well as city-run programs. If you look at the, the follow-up that Katrina sent, it was about seventy-two thousand that would be reduced from the, our charitable organizations that we fund. The Recovery Task Force, since the very beginning, has talked about, something that the city has talked about since for many years, about how we can serve our not-for-profits better, in that we have we have family resource in one building, we have seniors over here, we have the food bank over here, different spaces, yet, and they all have boardrooms and they all have computers and they all have HR functions. There has been a dream, I think it's been long thought of, about how we could maybe, as a city, maybe provide IT services to all the not-for-profits, so they could take IT completely out of their budget. That would be one example, or HR would be, would be a very similar example. We have software and programs that could help. This isn't flushed out yet, but that's the conversation that's going there. So it's helping our not-for-profits reduce their own operating without costing the city much. And that's probably a better way to support. We used to have about a hundred thousand dollars a year in Friends of FCSS money that went to that kind of stuff, went to PD training, and, and that's probably a better use of money than than having all these silos. I know they work well together, but they're not funded together, so if, if that helps. Okay, all right, I'm gonna go to councillor Watkins and then councillor Hanson. You're good, Gray?
My hand was up from last item.
Oh, okay, councillor Hanson.
Thanks. So I just wanted to clarify what you just talked about. We're gonna have a conversation at committee in January around where to find three hundred thousand dollars that we're cutting today?
Yes.
Can you, like, i- is that realistic?
Well, it's realistic. We can do it two ways that have been presented to us by Katrina. She's, she's shown us how she could cut it from the city-run programs. I'm gonna just get out the, the backgrounds. And then she gave us a follow-up on if we took that three hundred thousand across the board.
Right.
Yeah, and she's here to answer questions, but what I'm seeing is, it's, it's too big of a conversation to debate today in the middle of budget.
I see, I see what you're saying. And I guess for me, all of this, well, I'll save my remarks for debate.
Yep, okay. Questions? Councillor Hughes?
It just, I, I personally would feel a lot more comfortable if we were actually debating how much we're cutting from each area today and not putting on the committee to make a decision about this. Like, everything, we just did a motion on tourism, and we were very specific about what we're cutting and not cutting. We didn't just say, cut it by fifty-four thousand and have someone else figure it out. So personally, I feel like we should be very specific as to what we're if we're gonna cut a hundred thousand off of each program, then we can do a hundred thousand, and we can debate the hundred thousand off of each program separately if we want to, if we want to split it, but I feel like we should be clear about what we're doing and not leave it on a different committee to own up to this motion, I guess, is what I'm thinking. And also, the other committee is not the full council, so. You know, I, I mean, that's the other thing too, is I think that if we're gonna cut the budget, we should be specific about what we're doing with the budget today. That's my comments on this right now.
Okay, first of all, Community Living doesn't make any decisions, it would come to council, so council not, and so I'm not putting on CSAC or Community Living Committee. It's a definite decision of the seven of us. Can I ask you, councillor Hughes, of the two options, which would you prefer?
I, I think, I mean the one where we have the seventy-six, hundred and twelve, hundred and ten option? And then the versus just the three hundred? Are you asking which motion?
Of the, I, I'm calling them two options.
Okay.
Yeah.
Like, I think that we just, we should be specific about what we're doing and not doing. So if we're gonna cut it from this, this pot or whatever pot it is, that we should be specific on what we're cutting. The amount would be my recommendation, and that way too, we don't have to wonder about what's happening going forward. If, if we're cutting this program by fifty percent, or we're cutting it by seventy-six thousand, or whatever happens to be, it's clear. And then we can also debate each one separately, because maybe this council doesn't want to debate the, move the full three hundred thousand, perhaps you want to remove it from specific pots only. And that would be a different amount in the end.
Yeah, and of course, that would be readjusted when we set the middle rate.
Yeah, but I'm saying like, if it's three hundred thousand for this one, but it actually ends up being two hundred thousand in the end, because you want to cut two of the areas, not one, for example. And then we're not leaving it to you know, over, overcutting from one program because you want to keep another one going, for example. I guess it's just, the number may be different in the end, depending on if we actually wanted to cut from one, two, or three areas.
It absolutely could be, yeah, I agree.
Yeah, so that's why I'm suggesting that you just put a number in there, and if we want to debate the number, we can. If like, if somebody in council wants to amend the number you're bringing forward, someone obviously can. But then at least we're clear on where we're cutting. And then we can move forward from there, was my suggestion.
Okay. Any more questions? Wow, okay, seeing none. I'm, go ahead, councillor Jolly.
Thank you. So I, I'm, I'm okay with the, the motion as it stands. But I'm wondering if you would consider kind of adding the intent behind that, and I just messaged you just to say, you know, that we, we reduce the budget by three hundred thousand dollars, but that we facilitate discussions with funded agencies to to help consider how we can help with reducing operational costs to offset this reduction, because I, I believe that's, that's your intent.
I think it's partially my intent, so, did, did you email that?
No, I just messaged you right in, whatever, Zoom.
So I just want to make sure Ledge can grab it, let me see it.
I wanted to send it to you to see if that's something that interests you first, but.
Okay, can you cut and paste it to everyone? Says, and that's City of St Albert facilitate discussions with funded agencies, because they're how we can assist with operational costs to offset this reduction. So once that goes into, to everyone, oh, there it is, can you just add that in? I'll accept that as a friendly, and then, yeah. And I'm also gonna add, just for the purpose of full intention, so it's understood. I'll put it to everyone and I'll type it in. Although Cheryl could probably fast-tip her than me. I'll say, and that that, an agenda, that Community Living Standing Committee conversation in January is scheduled to discuss the two options that were presented to council on this reduction.
Madam Mayor, can I have, ask?
Go ahead.
Just maybe a clarification with administration. So I mean, so from a timeline perspective, so if this motion, as you put forward, passes today, that would take the three hundred thousand dollars off the operating budget for this time. But then it goes to CLSC in January. Administration comes back and we come back with, we can't do it. And so when does that? I mean, I'm just saying, let's say, we, let's say the ultimate, we can't do it, so. Then that three hundred thousand dollars comes back on to the operating budget at what point?
In May.
In May, so. I mean, I, I, I'm confused, so I could see some, I could see some confusion going on in, in, you know, we, we if we get done today, we have a number, and then.
Always could change between.
Well, I know, but it's never, it's never really gone. Three hundred thousand dollars is, what, points, like a point three percent, right? Of a, almost, almost half. So, I mean, it could have it, it could have it.
This is, I'm gonna say this is an exceptional year, and who knows what the provincial budget does?
Well, I guess that's the other fly-in, I mean, the, the provincial budget could come out in February and.
And, and they could have a huge reduction in FCSS and will reconsider everything.
Yeah, I just, I'm just trying to wrangle this through my head.
I'm just trying to not have this, this giant debate about whether the food bank gets money or whether counseling gets money today in, in a budget meeting. Because it's so unclear.
So anyways.
The intent is about limiting our over contribution.
I guess, I guess it does create some angst though for our social agencies. Can I ask Katrina a question?
Sure.
Katrina, you know, from, just from a a planning perspective, like, I mean, I know we're going through the holiday season and the intent is to bring it back in January as quick as possible. Is that even a reasonable timeline to come back with CLS, to have that information that would To have that information that would properly inform committees so that we could have this discussion moving forward at council?
Uh, thank you, Counselor Mackay, through Mayor Heron. I, I might have to defer to our finance team to just, as you know, I am fairly new to our budget process in St. Albert. So I think it would be dependent on what the intent, if the majority of money was intended to come from the FCSS program grant, then sooner rather than later for, for them to find out, for agencies to find out what they would be operating. I think the same applies to the FCS or the CSD Department budget as well, is, you know, that we have decisions to make that will be delayed into January if we're not certain what areas this is coming from in the budget.
Yeah, I guess that was the other follow-up question I had in relation to kind of year ends and all that in relation to when we put out the program funding or our funding to the programs. So I, I'm not sure whether that falls within this complication, I don't know. That's, that's something that, I mean, I don't know whether, so if we hold back this, if this motion, but does this hold back funding to our programs that we work with, not only internally, but I know perhaps the six hundred and eight thousand dollars that goes to the, that portion of the FCSS that goes to the actual agencies providing the programs may not be impacted, but is there other implications that I just don't know whether delaying it through January? And then it has to come to council in February?
We could do it in December. We have a Community Living Committee meeting in December.
We're not all, I guess we're, when is it in December? I thought we didn't have.
It's December fourteenth.
I don't, administration, can you get it back to, back quick?
The conversation, Katrina doesn't need to do anything, she's already given it to us, it's now up to council.
But there is some, I would imagine there is some background information back and forth with the, what, I, I just can't imagine having it that quick, but maybe I'm, maybe that's the part I'm still trying to wrestle with, so. And if I'm wrestling with it, I don't know. I apologize to the rest of my council if they're not following.
We're following. All right. Any more questions? Go ahead, Counselor Jolly.
I, I would just throw out that certainly the, the CSLC meeting in December is, is wide open. So there's, there's time to have that discussion in two weeks.
Did I put a date in that? Just say Community Living, just take out the month, Community Living Committee meeting. Okay. Sorry for this confusion, guys. All right, I'm seeing no more questions. Make sure, I'm gonna have to close the chat down to see all the participants' hands. Okay, I'm good. I said earlier, I'm going into debate now if you don't, I said earlier that, you know, some of the, so these motions came from a suggestion from our, from our administration. And I also said that, you know, I'll rejoice if some of them pass, and I'll rejoice if some of them fail for different reasons. There are only three motions to reduce the budget that are over a hundred thousand dollars. I've, I've already said that, and we need to find a million. This is one way to find a million, to get us towards it. I want to read you a text message that I got from a former city manager of ours. I won't say who, but I will read the text. "I just read the FCS article. I totally get and agree with the intent of the motion. I hate that the provincial government downloading on municipalities continues. If the deal is eighty twenty, then so be it." I'm gonna take some of the words out, 'cause they're not. "The twenty percent is gracious for municipalities to do for the province. In my opinion, affordable housing is the same. Property taxes were never intended to subsidize individuals. The provincial government and the feds have blurred the lines of responsibility and sucker municipalities into doing stuff by leaving gaps. So much from my rant, enjoy your weekend." So that was from a former city manager who understands this very well. During the presentations from the public, the Public School Board used the, the, the saying, "It takes a village to raise a child," and I love that saying, and I use it all the time, it's in my bio. I would say that a over contribution of four hundred thousand plus the three hundred and sixty that were required to by legislation is helping, we are contributing to raise a child. This is about the over contribution, and the, and we continually, Counselor Mackay can correct me if I'm wrong, we continually increase our over contribution. We always have. The provincial government has only increased their FCSS funding once since I've been elected. It's, I think it's time that they stepped up and, and, and helped with the cost of these things. The problem is, it's confusing, we don't know quite how to do it yet. But if we, as a council, are committed to, to lowering the tax increase, then this is, this is the biggest motion on the floor today that will do that. And, and obviously, we all know, this is not a, this is not intended to hurt our not-for-profits and our, and our vulnerable populations. We've got an entire task force working on how to help and support our vulnerable populations. We've got a motion that's coming up that I will probably support about homelessness. We're doing, we're doing a very good job, and, and I, I would say we're probably doing better than most municipalities are in, because we also have the outside agencies grant. Not only do we fund over a million dollars to FCSS, we have an outside agencies grant, a completely separate grant that not every municipality has that helps our not-for-profits and our vulnerable. So I'm gonna support this motion today. And it's an indication of, of commitment to lowering the taxes, it's really all it is, you know. I think the village has gotta be bigger than just the city, all, when the people coming back to the city all the time for more money. And I just get frustrated by it, so I'll let, I'll keep the rest of my remarks for closing. Counselor Jolly, your hands up?
Yeah, um, so I, I'm gonna support this motion for reasons that are a bit different than yours, Mayor Heron. I, I really appreciate that you haven't targeted the entire over contribution, because I think that kind of hit could not be absorbed without considerable impact to the programs that serve the community. But with this lower amount, what it does is encourages and really provides a platform for our supported agencies to have discussions about, you know, how they can collaborate to lower costs, really in the same way that our administration did this year when we asked them to find savings, and they were able to do that. And if, if we don't really make decisions like this that, that tighten the belt, there is no incentive to have those discussions. And to, to your comments earlier, that, you know what, this might all change in May if, you know, the province completely kills this funding. I mean, I hate the downloading, but at the end of the day, I wanna take care of our residents. So if we're in a spot in three months where we have the choice between cutting supports to, to families or increasing the taxes, that's another discussion. But, but I, I really applaud the, the leadership in bringing forward this motion when it, it, it is misunderstood what, what the intent is. So thank you, and, and I will be supporting this today.
Thank you, I've got Counselor Hanson and Counselor Broadhead.
Uh, thanks, Mayor, and I, I do appreciate you bringing this forward, and I think it, it does merit a full discussion. Unfortunately for me, this is not the year to do this, particularly in light of the pandemic. Um, I think supports are needed more than ever for our, our vulnerable, vulnerable people. People have lost jobs, there are mental health issues, school supports are needed, homelessness is, has grown, domestic violence is, has increased. We have a task force, and you were right, we are working hard towards efficiencies, but the task force isn't gonna wind up for another year. Um, and I, I'm, my hope is that we have some succinct plans in place by then. This is the year to have conversations internally and with our organizations about where we can cut, but it is not the year in my mind to remove any funding out of this budget. And I, I get angry that the province downloads and that we're supplementing them essentially so that we can provide services and provide supports for our, our residents. But on the other hand, the province has no money either, and they're trying to deal with oil and COVID and, and everything else. So I don't think it's realistic for us to, to dig our heels in and say, well, you know, stop downloading on us this year, because this isn't the year that that's going to happen, I don't think realistically. So I can't support the motion in a reduction for this year. I could certainly, with some thoughtful plans in place, some, a roadmap through the Recovery Task Force and conversations throughout the year, support it for the following year, or the council to support it in the following year, but just not this year. That's all.
Thanks, Counselor Hanson, Counselor Broadhead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I certainly appreciate all the comments that have been made thus far. These, these are the kind of decisions that are hard to make and, quite honestly, land in the laps of council, and we can't wiggle out of them. When, when the proposal was first made and the debate was how we were going to distribute the savings required, we received a letter from Katrina indicating how that could possibly be done. Even under those circumstances, there would have to be a conversation as to how that actually played out against various programming, but nonetheless, gave us a plan to execute the three hundred thousand dollar saving. I, I don't think there's ever going to be a year when we have a conversation like this and that it's gonna be easy. I don't think it ever will be. But decisions, hard decisions have to be made at every level of government, the feds, the province, and we can't escape them here either. And so if we want to reduce our taxes, the tax request of our people in a year of COVID, then some significant chunks have to be taken out of areas that hurt, and this will hurt. But I think there's a plan that is, is able to be executed that will look for efficiencies, just like we as an administration had to do to find those efficiencies, and, and I'm confident that that can be done. Will it be easy? No, but I think it can be done, and so as we go forward, you have my support.
Thank you. I'm seeing no more hands up. Oh, yeah, Counselor, right, Broadhead, or Watkins, you did give me a finger. Sometimes you use the hand thing, and, okay, not the finger, this. Counselor Watkins and then Counselor Hughes.
Did not give the mayor the finger. Please, okay, um, yeah, I'm kinda struggling with this, too, and I, I said I wanted to get to zero percent of the tax increase, but I, I, I almost think I'm willing to get to point three percent and not support this. I think Jackie kind of convinced me when she said that, you know, we need to, we need to cut, but this isn't really the year to cut. And this is probably the year to discuss with our not-for-profits that we're gonna have to make some hard decisions, and we are going to cut. But it's hard to see that and support this as being a year to cut. And the mayor said it's not gonna hurt our not-for-profits, it's not gonna, it's not really gonna hurt our most vulnerable, but it will. And even though this is not the role of government, municipal government, it has been for a long time, and we heard that, you know, over the years, we've increased, and we've increased, and we've increased. Well, we can increase this year, but we really can't cut, I don't think. Uh, we, we heard also at a lot of, like I say, I keep referring to the, the budget discussions and that, and people said, "Cut, cut, cut, but don't cut social services, because there's a lot of vulnerable people at this time in our community." So I, I think, you know, it takes a village, and I think this is the time we have to be a village, and we have to step up, and, you know, maybe we can to get to zero percent tax increase this year. And maybe the reason will be because of this, but if that's the case, you know, I'm willing to pay my point three percent, and I'm a taxpayer here, too, so I'm willing to give my point three percent, and so I won't be supporting this.
All right, no. Counselor Hughes, I think, is next, right? Yeah.
Uh, thank you. I'm gonna echo what Counselor Hanson and Watkins have said. I, I think that this is like you're trying to cut off your left arm to say you're losing weight, because the reality is that people need these supports right now. And the people that will be affected by this are the kids and the seniors. You look at the programs that are in FCSS funding, and it's Big Boy, Big Brothers, Big Sisters, it's Out Loud, it's Family Life Education, it's Income Support Pro, a tax program, which is the people who really, they're in the community village. I mean, this is not about frivolous expenditures that we're discussing here to make it happen. And the other two programs, one is, is counseling for people who are sixteen to twenty-four that have really lost. And the other one is for the, the Community Education Liaison Program. And there's, the kids that are getting this are the ones that are falling through the cracks right now. They aren't eligible for SAFE, but they are severely stressed, and yet there's nothing out there to help them. So mental support's what we should be trying to do, we can to help people cope, until things get better especially. But even after they do that, I mean, there'll still be issues, but the number of issues is just compounded dramatically with kids that are trying to deal with situations that are so stressful at home. If you don't have a job and your parents, like, your parents don't have a job, and they don't know how they're gonna pay the bills, their stress level is so high that anything can trigger somebody just because they're so stressed. And the kids are the ones that are sitting there, and they're the most vulnerable, and they're trying to find ways to get through this. So this is not the time to talk about how we want to cut the taxes, which will be effectively a one dollar per month tax savings. Say, look at that, we cut the taxes by a whole dollar a month, but at the consequences of children and seniors who need it. We, I don't wanna cut the taxes in the backs of the most vulnerable that are, need the social supports the most right now. And I do think that we could definitely have a conversation with administration and discuss the other two programs especially, and say, you know, perhaps in the new year, we could have a different conversation about potentials and how much things cost to run it, et cetera, et cetera, from the city's point of view. But out of the gate, just saying, I'm gonna do this, and then figure out how we're gonna do it otherwise, there will be consequences. You, we are gonna cut the budget by three hundred thousand dollars for community organizations, which means that all the approved budget in twenty, on December twenty-first will be undone and reevaluated, because we wouldn't have the money for it, or we'll be cutting social support programs and counseling for kids that need it. And that, that's the two areas that we have the choice to do that are being affected by FCSS. Uh, it's not affecting all city agencies grants, it's a different grant altogether. So I just, I, I don't think that people would say, "Great, you cut my taxes by a dollar a month, and, but my children don't have the support they're looking for, it's worth it." I just, I don't think that that's what the community was saying. As Counselor Watkins said, they would said, "Cut, get the taxes down, but don't cut social programs." And I think that that, but don't also cut social programs needs to be respected. Thanks.
All right, I think that's all the debate we have. I think that's everyone. I'll close with, I mean, I agree with everything that's been said from all, all of you, so don't get me wrong. When you hear our premier speak to municipalities directly, and he does all the time, he tells us to get our house in order and cut our taxes. They're uncomfortable conversations, and they are the most difficult. Unfortunately, it's easier for the federal government, because if they don't do it, then the provincial government does it. It's easier for the provincial government to just reduce, and they will. But the buck stops with us, and if we want the buck to stop ending with us, we're gonna have to start saying, "Our role is this. We're gonna support our residents already, we already are over-contributing. We already have a separate grant called the outside agencies. Our priority is tax, property tax rates." So, that's all I can have. Call for the vote.
That's it.
All right, I'll read it out. Mayor Heron in favor? All right, I'll read it out. Mayor Heron in favor, Councilor Broadhead in favor, Councilor Jolly in favor. We have Councilor Hanson, Mackay, Watkins, and Hughes against. So that fits. What's next? The Halloween haunt is a go. Woo-hoo. And then uh the mayor's celebration of the arts. Someone pulled? It was, wasn't it? Yeah. Because I just needed to give some indication. Didn't I? Paul's there. Hold on, Paul. Sorry. Of which option, right? Is that, that's what you needed, Paul, right? So
It's correct.
There was three options. The first two was reducing the two thousand and twenty-one budget by the full twenty-four thousand. So I have pulled it to let everyone know that I want, it's going to go with option one, which do you remember what option one was, Paul?
Yes, give me half a second. So option one reads, continue with the award recipients as chosen by the jury in 2020 and not run a new nomination intake for 2022.
Right. And that would result in the full reduction of twenty-four thousand, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Does everyone understand that? Any other questions? Okay. I'll open debate with the, the conversation really is, is upcoming on, on whether we're going to go to once a term or every two years for the mayor's celebration of the arts. Given the times, I think probably, you know, not doing it annually is a good idea. So we did do um some selections. We actually have a very public um artist of the year. What is it? Lifetime achievement? And uh so I still, I don't want to scrap those decisions and those nomination intakes. So I want to honor that. But we'll do that in two thousand and twenty-two. So going forward, I think in the budget will be, I think, twelve thousand a year to, to fund that. Is that what? Paul?
Correct.
Okay. Anyone else on debate on this one? All right, that was easy. Call for the vote. That one is carried unanimously. Uh, Councilor Hughes pulled off uh twelve and that was well done because that was the one that they'd already actually adjusted for the budget, wasn't it? I'm looking at you Diane, but I, it, I've got it here. So it's $27,000, I think. Twenty-nine thousand seven hundred. That's already been reduced in the budget. So I need to withdraw that motion. Because it was already achieved. Okay. Then we are on to motion twelve, sorry, thirteen, Public Art Reserve. Let me read it. That the public art operating budget be temporarily reduced to zero by reducing the annual transfer to the Public Art Reserve for two thousand and twenty-one for maximum of two hundred and twenty-two thousand to zero through the reduction of the pays you go operating contribution to offset taxes. Okay. Questions on this one? No questions? Okay. Go ahead, Councilor Hughes.
I just wanted to ask a question. It's just that this is, it's going to be at one time, which means that the following year it's going to go up by the same amount. Just so we're clear, like, we're reducing it by two hundred thousand and we're automatically giving ourselves a two hundred thousand, twenty thousand dollar uh tax increase for the twenty-twenty budget by the same amount. Just I just, I, I, that's it. I guess it's not, it was just a statement of just like, just want to make sure we're clear. That was your, the intention is we're going to reduce it. We're going to go back up again. Yeah. Okay. Makes it a bit tougher just because we're Okay, that's it.
All right. Very similar arguments to what I said earlier about the taxes. This is the second biggest motion that would reduce our taxes. Councilor Watkins said he'd be okay with a point three. We're not going to even get close to point three because of the way this has been going. So um this is the second biggest one. I, I have, so I'm going to just go with a leap that Natalie pulled this off for, for her vote count. I'm not sure. Now, do you have your hand up for debate or was it a question? Debate, okay. And I appreciate that. And that's why, Councilor Hughes, this is a temporary reduction because I continue to support the arts and what it brings to our community. When we had the conversation a little bit earlier about with pulling from reserves, you know, we have set aside some money because we know that years two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three, et cetera, are going to be hard and there's money in reserves to help with that because we didn't want to spend it all in this year. So you're right, we'll have some spikes due to the temporary nature of this motion, but that's a conversation for the next council and that um it goes back to lots of the conversations we had with FCSS. This is the year to be, to be making these fiscally responsible kind of difficult cuts. And sadly, the arts is one that um has been targeted and it's been probably targeted everywhere. And I feel sorry for that in general. But um when you prioritize everything, I think some, it, it falls low. Anyway, it's just temporary. Like I want to recommit to it in, in the following year. Councilor Jolly, you're probably going to say this better than I did.
Thank you. Um, I did pull it to vote against it. I guess I, I have two comments. I prepared them. Hopefully my voice doesn't crack. So last week, um, the National Art Gallery of Canada published an article that referenced uh twenty nineteen World Health Organization report that talked about the impact of arts on our mental and physical health. It said in a review, see, I, I couldn't do it, in a review of more than three thousand studies on the role of the arts in improving health and wellbeing for conditions spanning stroke, heart disease and cancer, as well as dementia, isolation and bereavement. The report underscores the value of the arts in the prevention of ill health, promotion of health, and management and treatment of illness across the lifespan. So this is the second year in a row that we've told our artists that they have no value by passing this reduction. Um, and, and if the health of our community isn't a priority, priority right now, I don't know what is. And my second comment is, you know, I'm going to, I was talking to my partner earlier about this today and, and he asked if he could address counsel today and I said, please don't. His, his words are a lot sharper than mine. But I, I will quote our, our poet laureate, Julia Sorenson, who, who was interviewed for, by the Gazette um after we cut Amplify Funding. Um, and I think her, her comments also apply here. Um, she said that it is integral to have arts funding and arts programming because it what's creates, it, it's what creates your community. She said that art funding is a long-term investment into the vibrancy and health of the community. And while the effects of art funding cutbacks may not be felt immediately, they will have ripple effects on generations. Um, it really hit home when I read her words saying, uh, it's always a little bit frustrating to me when governments say we're struggling. Let's cut this art funding because it's super, superfluous. Uh, but it's truly not. Art is a part of what makes human beings exceptional. And if you no longer have an exceptional community, you're going to suffer for it. So thank you to, to Julia for those comments. Um. So uh with that, I'm, I'm not willing to give this up for a, a second year in a row. That's all I have.
She's a smart kid. Or go ahead, Councilor Hughes.
Okay, um, my major concern is that we're, if this does pass, we're at a point two five percent tax increase for twenty-twenty-two that we've worked into this. But that will be another problem for another day. When I look at this, it's not about cutting outside agencies funding or support for organizations that are encouraging art. It's about just the purchase of specific art pieces. Um, that's what this is about is it would probably be between two to three pieces of art that may or may not have been purchased to be put throughout St. Albert, which would make it potentially more enjoyable, depending on whether or not people agree with what's been purchased. As you go through St. Albert, but it's not about cutting or discouraging people from actually using artist therapy. And I know I'm using artist therapy to get through this year myself. So I totally appreciate what it's able to do and how, and I know Councilor Watkins' photography as, and it's it's therapeutic, I believe he would, I, I'm putting words in his mouth, but I think that he's, he's said how much he does enjoy it. Um, so I, this is not about that. This is just about recognizing that we just have to um to recognize that people, we don't need to purchase three more pieces of art, each piece of art um in the next twelve months. And um, but the consequences of having this point two five percent tax increase in twenty-twenty-two does loom in the back of my head. Um, because it is a very temporary relief. So that's the two things. I'll listen to anyone else, anything else to say about that to try to talk me in one way or another. Um, but that's kind of my thought process as on this motion. That's it. Thank you.
All right, Councilor Watkins.
I am going to support the reduction. Uh, it's just like, like uh, Councilor Hughes says. We're not cutting funding to artists. We're just not purchasing art and using taxpayers' dollars to purchase art. And I've heard it from a lot of people, a lot of people, that we should not be purchasing art this year. You can still practice art. We're not saying that you can't practice art, as Councilor Hughes says. I, I love photography. I practice photography almost on a daily basis. I'm trying, now learning, trying to learn how to make music. I'm doing that on my own. I draw and I paint all the time, even as I'm sitting here, I'm doodling. And so I'm, and, and I'm not telling artists that they have no value. I'm just not supporting the spending of money on public art this year in St. Albert. And I realize it, it's important. Uh, and we have a lot of public art there. But there are a lot of people who are really hurting. And like I said, we're trying to get the taxes down. And I've heard from numerous people about that we shouldn't be spending money on public art. So for all reasons, I'm going to support it, uh, the reduction this year.
Anyone else on debate? I think it was said that this is not a reduction in programming for arts. It's about public art acquisition. And according to the background, there's actually nothing planned uh for this year and there's enough in the reserve for maintenance and restoration. So I think Councilor Watkins said it, well, this doesn't signal that we don't value artists. It's just that this, this year. And you're, and Councilor Jolly is completely correct. It's two years in a row we haven't made this transfer. But it's, it's difficult for, for most people, a lot of people out in our community, and this is a small way we can help them. And Councilor Jolly, don't ever apologize for tearing up. I do it all the time. Uh, call for the vote. That's a six to one vote with Councilor Jolly against. Go for a little bit longer before we take a break. Um, we are now on the Canada Day motion, which is fourteen. I'll read it. That the Recreation and Parks Operating Budget for Canada Event in two thousand twenty-one be temporarily reduced by fifty thousand dollars.
Madam Mayor, uh, can I just ask a question?
Yeah, absolutely.
The tax meter?
Oh, do we have a tax meter? Can we share it? Like, yeah. A taxometer. I don't think we're going to see it move very much, Councilor Broadhead.
Oh, fair enough. I just need to
Visual.
So we're at point seven right now?
There you go. That help?
It does. Thank you.
All right. So I just, any questions about the Canada Day motion? Councilor Hughes?
So um, what I'm wondering is what, is there, I'm asking staff, is there the opportunity to do something differently for less money for Canada Day? If the rest, like, because I, I need, I need to believe that these restrictions are not going to be in place in the same level for July first. Like that, I need to believe this. This is to get through the week, right? So um, it, and like a lot of the stuff for Canada Days is outdoors. So I'm, I'm wondering, has there been any discussion all with staff to say we could do something different to recognize Canada Day or something in a limited capacity or any, has there been any discussions at all about what could be done alternatively and potentially for less money to still recognize it so that people have something to look forward to?
I think I'll, I, I want to, I was going to have it in my arguments, Councilor Hughes, that this is not canceling Canada Day.
Okay.
Yeah, we're just reducing the budget. There's still um some money in the budget to host something, something different. That it's too, I would say, Diane, correct me if I'm wrong, it's almost impossible to plan right now until we know what the provincial restrictions are. But there is still money in the budget to do something, whether it's virtual or not. And um there's still opportunities for sponsorships, which in the past has raised seventy thousand dollars. So that's what the background said. So Diane, did you want to add to that?
Uh, thanks, Mayor Heron. So yes, you're correct. There's, there, if this motion passed, there would still be sixty thousand dollars in the budget to do some Canada Day events. Um, in two thousand twenty, we did virtual and we have our forty-three thousand hits on the virtual um opportunities. So we could look to that. Hopefully the restrictions will be reduced and we can do something more than just virtual. So even with sixty thousand dollars, we could still do some kind of event. Maybe we just do like the fireworks and depending on what the restrictions are, we will definitely provide whatever we can for the community for Canada Day and can definitely do it with a reduced budget for next year.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate the clarity. Thank you. Next, I need hope, Mayor Heron. I need hope. You understand?
Any more questions? Okay, my, my entire debate was just said. So it's modifying the event, not canceling it. This is to align with provincial health orders. Still allows for the typical accumulation of sponsorship dollars, which uh generally get up to seventy thousand. Does say in the background that there's a very low probability we will host our typical event. I don't think we're going to at all be allowed to have ten thousand people gathering in a small space. And even if we were allowed to do it, will people even be comfortable with that? So you know, of the hundred and ten thousand dollars, we're cutting it by fifty. Anything else? Okay, Councilor Broadhead, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Certainly I'm going to support this motion. But if we're out of COVID nineteen by July first, I'll be making a motion to supplement our
Okay.
our budget and have a heck of a blowout. Honestly, I'm with you, Councilor Hughes. I really want some hope. But I have anyway.
You've been talking about this big party for a while now, Wes.
Well, I, I, people need hope. I, there's absolutely no doubt about that. So anyway, I appreciated the point and the motion.
Call for the vote. That looks like it's unanimous. All right. Oh, the next one is zero one five. I made a mistake when I made this motion. Where is it? So in the background, there was a um a recommended motion. Did you see that, Cheryl? Okay, I'll read it to you. That the operating budget be increased by five thousand seven hundred on an ongoing basis. And I'll explain my error, counsel. So before I was even elected, I guess, there was always twenty-eight thousand dollars in the mayor's budget for special events. Actually, I think actually I reduced that two years ago. But anyways, um in two thousand and twenty, we reduced it to, to fourteen thousand dollars due to COVID because we knew we wouldn't be hosting anything. And we never brought it back up to the, to the twenty-eight. But when I went and looked at um historical trends, I saw that we weren't spending twenty-eight, we're spending about twenty thousand. So really, I just want the budget to reflect twenty thousand dollars because you know, if, if things allow in two thousand and twenty-one, um, things like our appreciation for our, our volunteer committees, sponsorship of, of various events could come out of this pot of money. I just, I, the twenty thousand dollars is historical. It's up to you if you want to, you want to keep it historical. It's up to you if you want to, you want to keep it historical or not. It's in my debate. Can we clear off um, the check marks? I don't know who does that, but I see Counsel Hanson's hand up. Is that a question? Okay, go ahead.
Um, so are you thinking? Um, I was thinking you were going to withdraw this so that we wouldn't even move it. And then you would just maintain a $14,000.
We could do that.
But but what you're, what you're thinking is that hope may arise by the maybe the last latter half of the year and that funding could come into play around volunteers and celebrating and coming together. And that's where the money.
Yeah. You know, the staff upstairs say that $14,000 won't won't cut it, um, even if we're halfway back to normal. That, you know, if we want to do another council barbecue like we did a couple of years ago, that this is the fund that comes out of the entire appreciation for our not-for-profits or for our volunteer committees comes out of this budget.
Okay.
Any sponsorship of, let's say, the the air show or the festival could come out of this budget. So that's it.
Okay, well, I'm, I I, yeah, okay. Yes, all I asked, I just wondered if you were, we were just not going to move it. But 20,000 is where you want to go.
All right, any more comments or questions, I mean? I'm not even going to debate this one. Anyone on debate? Yep.
Is there other funds that you have access to or that we would have access to just to pop it up to that in case we needed it? Like, let's say, I don't know, we we did get out of this late summer, early fall, and you needed that extra dollars for whatever celebratory event uh we're having in Wes's backyard. Um, but isn't there other?
You know what, you're asking sadly the wrong person. Rayanne would be able to answer that a little bit better than me. Uh, I do know that in the budget season in 2019, they get a year ago, uh, Don Bandevire and I went through the entire office budget and stripped it dry. We we found about 100,000 in savings there. Uh, and then we did it again this spring because of COVID. So I don't think there's a lot. We all have about $1,000 sponsorship, but that is your own personal. It's not, that wouldn't pay for this kind of stuff.
No, I just wanted to make sure that we address that so that we didn't say. I mean, if, because it looks like we're topping up something when we could let it go for a year and then just move you back to $20,000 next year. But that goes again to what Counsel Hughes is thinking in relation to 2022's budget will always be greater. So even though we're only talking five and a half.
Yes, yes, it's not that much.
Okay.
This was a request from my staff. Because they said they can't do it. All right, uh, Counsel Hanson?
Yeah, sorry about that. Um, just came to me from what Counsel Mackay was asking. So I guess if this motion fails, your budget just remains at 14,000?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks. I'm just thinking because it's an election year. I don't know how much of this money would be actually used this year. I mean, just given the, just given the year. But um, I'll think about it. I don't know how I'm going to vote yet.
Okay, well, I don't know if there's any more debate and I'm not going to close, so. Yeah, I'm just calling for the vote. All right, and I'm missing two votes here. All right, I've got four against Broadhead, Hanson, Mackay, and Watkins, and Hughes, Jolly, and Herron in favor, so that fails. Again, one of those that I won't cry about. Kevin, are you praying?
Okay, Kevin, you look like you're praying.
Don't let this one fail.
We're moving on.
Waiting for the meeting to end.
We are getting close. It is postponed motion 016. It's Counsel Hanson's motion. I'll get you to read it, then we'll open it up for questions.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. That the recommended operating business case merit, mayor's task force to end homelessness, social housing specialists be funded in the amount of $82,000 funding source assessment growth.
Questions on this one? All right, seeing no quest, oh, go ahead, Counsel Watkins.
Yeah, it said in the report that the purpose of this person was to advance uh the homeless prevention strategies. And sorry, I just wasn't too clear on what where those were, where those were written. If I, did I miss those? Are those in the homelessness report? Homeless prevention.
Some of them are, but I'll let Katrina answer.
Okay. Thank you through Mayor Herron to Counsel Watkins. Um, yes, those were the um strategies that were identified within the mayor's task force on homelessness final report. And there were, um, of course, the lead area was around um youth and a youth transitional housing. But there were three other areas identified that um also could benefit from um an increased um, an increased uh access to housing as well.
Thank you.
All right, I see no more questions. Counsel Hanson, I'll let you start your debate.
Thanks, I wrote down a few notes here. Um, starting with the pandemic has shown shone a light on some really difficult issues as we've already talked about today. Loss of jobs, mental health issues, increase in domestic violence, um, all that have affected residents and certainly our family units. Housing is a priority for us. But what I've learned in my intercity forum on social uh policy is that it's an issue for everyone. Uh, and it needs to get tackled. Uh, St. Albert is not immune to our housing issue. And while we have staff that is obviously stellar in terms of planning around uh housing, Laurie Scott and housing builds, we we really don't have a handle on the actual systemic issues that go into some of that. I think that this is a position that will connect um the housing problem with the real, the people that need it. Um, we need to bring the social aspect of housing specialists forward to work with our social sector and and there to work with all of the organizations. And, you know, Susan Kreske said it very well uh today. From her standpoint, that would be a liaison that she would, she would work with a lot. Um, obviously, we're in unprecedented times. And through this pandemic, there is one thing um that is a fact. And that is that our vulnerable throughout the province, um, certainly in St. Albert, have been hit the hardest. And so we do need to assist people in getting into um getting back on their feet. The other thing is, when we talk about the youth and we talk about increase of domestic violence and we talk about situations that they are living in at home and the need for them to flee or get out. Um, as Counselor Hughes mentioned earlier, the stress is unbelievable. And housing, I have learned through uh sitting with my colleagues around the province, housing is the crisis. And we saw it, we saw it in Edmonton with the homelessness um situation. And that wasn't unique either uh in big cities. So I think we have an opportunity to um bring some expertise into a situation that we really can tangibly help. And I think the time is right to make that investment into the social sector and into um and into helping our families. Maybe, maybe just sustain or or create a better life for themselves. And and uh, so those are my remarks. It's, it's a kind of an emotional um motion because you, in order to in order to um see the dividends, you have to make the investment. And I see this as a a very, very important position in in our city to make the investment directly with the people that need it. So I'm really happy to bring this forward and I hope that my colleagues can see fit to pass it.
Okay, go ahead, Counsel Mackay.
Yeah, thank you very much. I'll add commenting in a way, and I'm going to support this. And I realize the difficult times we've had, but we just had a a very robust discussion in relation to the impacts um that the pandemic is having on our vulnerable population. And one of the um gaps that the homelessness task force identified was this specialized housing position. And it is unique and it's not similar to the um current position that's that we have within um our administration. You know, Counsel Hanson raised some excellent points and it's sort of, it, you know, um, it's, it's almost like a human rights question in the sense of, you know, you need a home to actually connect. You just don't realize what an address will actually provide you and what you cannot get without actually having an address. Uh, so many of our programs are affiliated to, well, where do you live? What's your address? Well, you you can't say I live by the second tree by the bench, you know? And and we found that homelessness in our community looks entirely different than homelessness does in many other communities in our region. And one of the things that we're going to perhaps find, and I think Counsel Hanson identified it is, is, I mean, it's sort of like um crime prevention, or if you're looking at other harm reduction programs, you just never see the impact. You may see something 10, 15, 20 years down the way. I mean, that's the foundation of a lot of our social programming. We hope that by helping somebody today, they're not caught in the same situation as some of our other more vulnerable people are 10, 15, 20 years now. With pandemic, you're, you're talking, uh, most of us are really maybe two, three weeks away from potentially facing some of the same challenges that we have. And that's, that's really the, what the social housing specialists will do. I mean, it it sounds like, well, we'll just match individuals to homes. No, it's, it's a bigger liaison. So um, you know what? I mean, I I said it when we were talking about youth homelessness and we're talking about it. And if, you know, if our youth fail, everybody fails. And uh, so this is long-term ramifications. Yes, it impacts our operating budget. Um, it adds a new position at a time when maybe we should um be looking at a cutting. And I'm conscious of well, everything that we did look at. But we have to look at what are the long-term impacts and actually the costs that we're going to actually save, whether it's our social costs or our uh policing costs or others. So anyways, I I support it. Um, this is what just, this is one of my core values. So I'm going to stick with this one.
Any more other head counsel Hughes?
So um, my concerns is that when this all came forward to the Community Living Committee, there was some kind of understanding that there would be provincial funding to help pay for this type of thing. And then it's quickly morphed to forgetting that conversation and now thinking it should be municipal responsibility in the whole. And I, my concern is that in the end, you will hire one person, but the level of homelessness will not be affected. What you have to do is get these people homes. Simple as that. You can put $2 million and buy 20 apartments or 10 apartments. But anything else beyond that's not going to get somebody a house. So I I'm really trying to struggle here about whether or not this is just what what this will accomplish in the end. Because it, the people who have homelessness problems, in the end, regardless if this person is hired or not, are still going to be homeless. They're still going to have the same problems that you have. Uh, they might have more sympathy, uh, but that's not going to change the situation. And I really feel like if you're going to do something, we should be doing it through an outside agency. Um, as far as efficiencies go, the outside agencies deliver way more than we get from provincial, from municipal programs. So and it's just the simplest look at fact that we have FCSS funding outside agencies. We have, this year, we approved $532,000 or about to approve, hopefully, or it's coming forward for approval for $532,000. And that's to support seven different organizations. Uh, meanwhile, we have two programs in the city that are being run for $900,000. So if you're looking for efficiencies, we should have an outside agency that does it. We could talk to the community village and say, what would you recommend? And have a liaison go through there. It would just be a far more effective way to handle it than to take it upon and say this is a municipal responsibility. Uh, there's been discussion about whether or not this is, you know, what should be the role of municipalities? And should the role of municipalities be to hire homelessness specialists, housing, housing, social housing specialists under their own staff? And I really feel like there should be a different way to solve this problem and not necessarily put it under the management of the city to do it. Um, and instead try to find another organization to work with, to fund, to have them work and take the ball and roll with it. Otherwise, this is going to become very, very expensive. And I'm really not confident that in the end, we're not going to have the same number of people who'd be homeless in St. Albert anyway. So this is not about trying to say I don't have sympathy for this because I do. But I also want to make sure that the money we're spending actually gets results and that we're actually spending the money the best way we can to get the most results possible. I don't see spending it on one staff person under the city is actually going to make the difference as opposed to any other alternative that could come out there. That's it.
Any more comments on debate? I will add, because I I don't want to seem somewhat hypocritical when I'm saying I don't want to spend money uh when I feel it's a provincial responsibility. And this one definitely is a provincial responsibility. But my FCSS motion was not going to eliminate the the city's responsibility over and above the legislation. But what has been identified through COVID is this gap. There is not a single agency in St. Albert that focuses on housing. Food Bank does a great job with um a lot of the supports they do, but they don't focus on housing. I too wish there was another option. So when I didn't know the option, I went to the experts. I went to, to the executive director, James Spady, the executive director of the Food Bank, the executive director of the mustard seed, asked them what the option is. The option they said is the city needs somebody to coordinate this in, within the municipality. This is not just about youth homelessness. So I believe that that's a priority. But there is seniors homeless issues. There's, there's adults that are homeless. And there's, there's young kids, like the home share program is is being run off the corner of the desk. But this is the kind of stuff that 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 we need dedicated staff to. We had a dedicated staff temporarily to help with the homelessness task force that is no longer with us, who was fantastic. And we need somebody like that back in the city to help us navigate these waters. So beginning of this whole debate, I said I was going to support two motions that would increase the budget that I that I was aware when I walked in the door. This was one of them. So Counsel Hughes to close.
I think you mean Hanson.
Sorry, I meant.
That's okay.
They're on my screen and you're both ages, sorry.
Yeah, that's fine. Um, no, I think you said it very well, uh, Mayor Herron. Um, I I would like us to hearken back to the town halls that we went to for for budget 2021 and without fail at every single session. Um, housing, affordable housing and housing for our vulnerable came up every time in all groups. And uh, and all of them said it was the one thing that we could do better on. So this is the first step of improving that. And I think that the backgrounder says it very well. At the end, the social housing specialists would work to help fill the gaps that exist for our more vulnerable residents and move St. Albert closer to its goal of being welcoming and inclusive regardless of income level. And so um, I think it's a, I think it's a wonderful step forward and I think it's very progressive. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Call for the vote. All right, so in favor, we have Mayor Herron, Counsel Broadhead, Counsel Hanson, Counsel Mackay. Opposed, we have Counsel Jolly, Counsel Watkins, and Counsel Hughes. That passes by majority. Um, postponed motion 021 was approved on consent. So we're, we're going to uh PM 029, which is electoral franchise fees. I want to gauge counsel's comfort. Do we need to take, because I have a feeling this one's going to be some debate. Do we need um a quick break? Like, or do you want to wait till six? I think then we could probably adjourn and you can have a full supper at that point. Keep going. Give me some nods or thumbs up. Thumbs up? Okay, go ahead, Counsel Hughes.
Okay, I just had a couple of questions.
Just read it into the record and then we'll take questions.
Well, actually, the question is because I'm not, as it's written, I can't do it this way because the backgrounder says it can't take effect till April 20th, April. Um, so I just wanted to, I just need to have a conversation with Diane.
Go ahead. Yep.
Okay, I'm just looking. Diane, put your screen on. I'm just looking. Diane, put your screen on so I can see you. There she is. Hello. Okay, so you're saying it's already been approved, so it really could not come into effect until April 1st. So the, the tax difference would be different then, right? Because it came into April 1st, it would be.
So the difference would be only 576,000.
And then because it's already going into effect, like I'm looking at the wording of this, and I think, okay, it's not going to be postponed. It would be like, you'd have to reapply for it to go back into effect in 2023, right? Like, because you're, we'd be canceling it or decreasing it and then increasing it again?
Yeah, so it would be a request to decrease it back down to the 7.5% as of April 1st. And then if we wanted it to go back up in 2022, we would have to do another application to the AUC to do that again, back up to the 10%.
Okay. So could we, through the motion, say that electrical franchise fee is decreased to 7.5 effective April 1st and then resumes 10% at, for January 1st, 2022? Or would that, I'm just looking at the feasibility on this.
Um, yeah, I would suggest actually that motion, that motion would be acceptable to the AUC as council approval to go back up to the 10% for 2022, if we put that all together in the motion.
So, say that again.
So it would be that we decrease it from April until the end of December. From seven, because it's going to go up to 10% for January 1st. And it's too late to change it for January 1st was what the backgrounder said. So then the motion would be that it would go down to 7.5%, which, because it's going to go up to 10 for January 1st, go down to 7.5% for April 1st and go back up to 10% for January 1st of 2022.
Okay.
So it had the nine months decrease is what it would do on that. And if that were to happen, then I'm just trying to think here. Okay, no, it's fine. It would just be the same situation. Okay, so then, because I'm just thinking it would raise the taxes by, the tax rate by the 576 and then the following year it would decrease those taxes by about $200,000, right?
That's correct.
Okay. Very ironic. Okay. So that would be the, I don't know if Cheryl got that, but it would be the motion would be to decrease the franchise fee from 10% to 7.5 effective April 1st and to resume it to 10% for January 1st of 2022. That would be the motion.
Okay, you got that, Cheryl? Not accepting it yet. I'm just waiting for Cheryl to got it. Yeah.
I think Cheryl must talk about 19,000 words a minute. So I had another question, Diane. So I had one more question, which would be if this motion was approved, what would be the tax increase now? What would be the net tax increase if it wasn't approved?
Yeah, that's going to be hard for them to calculate. Can we just?
Well, if they just add their tax meter, they can just put it in and then say, and then take it out. Like, it's not, it's just an Excel spreadsheet. And what is it now? Because we're about 8.8 now because of that homelessness.
So that would be a 0.5 increase on the taxes.
Okay, so it'd be a 1.3% tax increase in total then?
Uh, what, 1.2 is what it's rounding to right now.
1.2? Oh, okay, great.
All right. Yeah, that was your question, Council Mackay. Okay. Any more questions? Council Watkins.
What was the dollar value increase on utilities on an average single?
Diane's coming back. I'm going to guess 520.
So sorry, can you repeat the question, like the impact of a 0.5 on a?
What was the, if we did not, if we have a 2.5% increase as planned, what is the impact on a average single family?
Our lost revenue dollars.
568,000 is, is.
No, that's not the question I'm asking. I'm asking, what is the impact on the average person's utility bill on a single family house?
I don't think they have, um, I thought we might have had that in the background or to the PM.
No.
I don't think it was in the backgrounder.
No.
And I do not have that off the top of my head. It's, it's, it's pretty, the difference in the franchise fee, it's pretty minimal. It's, it's dollars, a couple of dollars probably a month on the average utility bill.
If we have a 2.5% increase?
That's correct.
Council Watkins, maybe I can help here. I've got my bill here today. The franchise fee for, was $5.25 for me last month. 25, or 33% increase or whatever, 25% increase worked out about 87% per, per month.
87 cents a month, okay. Okay, thank you.
Jean Mark.
But it's considerably more on your taxes.
Yeah, it's considerably more on the taxes. If we don't add 87 cents on your utility bill to everybody, we're adding 0.7% or 0.5% increase in taxes to the average house, which is what?
It's a dollar five about a month.
How much?
About a dollar seventy-five.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
I don't know, my tax bill is four, four grand a year.
No, the difference of the franchise fee difference versus putting in your taxes difference is a dollar seventy-five a month. So if we raised it by the 0.5, that's what you're looking at.
My question was, if we, if you just have a franchise fee of 2.5%, Diane said it was a dollar something a month. If we increase the tax on the average single family house by 0.5%, how much is that per month?
Well, 1% is 38, so divide that two and then divide it by 12, so 158. So around 160, we'll say.
To make this simpler, without any numbers, Diane, the savings in your taxes, is it more or less than you pay in the franchise fee?
For the average family home of 2, or 450,000 and then an average electricity usage, you save more on your taxes by having the franchise fee.
Okay.
And the main reason behind that is because there's other entities paying the franchise fee that are tax exempt. So the, that revenue is spread out over a larger.
And of course, that's hard because the average businesses are different and the average household is different. Yeah, but that's average. Yes, okay.
I still had a, I still had a question, my question. Everybody started cutting on my question and asked the question. My question was, if we increase the tax on the house by 0.5%, what is the cost per month on a house, the average $450,000 house of a 0.5% tax increase?
Okay, she's quickly, just give her a sec. She's got her calculator in.
Actually, I think Council Hughes had a very close estimate that she just gave of what it is on a.
About a dollar sixty.
Okay. Okay, and you concur with that, Ms. McMorley? No, a 60?
Yes.
Okay. Not that I know it's a cheat sheet, but I just, I like to hear it from staff.
I like to hear that I'm right as well, so I got no problem you asking.
Questions? Diane, go ahead, Council Hughes.
Okay, so I realize this is not a popular motion to say, because we can say our tax increase is only 0.7%. But we have to recognize the fact that we are still, the real tax increase is effectively a 1.2%. And the difference is not going to be from the getting it from the schools or the churches and the whole, the largest difference is going to be from the heavy consumers, which are the business community. So my, when I looked at this, I thought, first of all, we need to acknowledge the total amount coming out of people's wallets is not going to be 0.7%. It's going to be substantially higher. It's going to be between a 1.1 and 1.2% tax increase effectively with the franchise fee. But the other thing is just that the businesses are the ones that are going to be hurt the hardest on this. And so that's why, I mean, I realize it's unpopular to say it's a 1.2. It's much easier to say it's a lower number and just ignore the fact that we have a franchise fee that's collecting more money. But the reality is this is going to hit the businesses the hardest. And in some cases, those businesses are going to be paying upwards of thousands of dollars more a year because they use a lot of electricity. And businesses often do not have the opportunity to turn the lights out because they need to have things running in the background. Lights have to stay on or employees hit things. So you have, they have higher electricity consumption costs and they're the ones that are going to be paying more on this. And, I mean, I debated this a lot in my head. Should I just go along with this and just not mention this? But the reality is that the stormwater fees were going to be increasing and they were going to be the highest hit for businesses. And the administration's recommendation earlier this year was, let's delay it by a year because it's going to hit the businesses harder and it's going to be difficult for them to manage in light of the financial situation that everyone was in. And it's the same situation for the electrical franchise fee. Is that the businesses that are, and we can say, oh, you're a larger business, it doesn't, you, you have 30 employees, you can take the hit. They may not be able to easily take the hit. And if they go under, those 30 employees are out of a job. And if it's a smaller business, mom, pop shop, and they're trying to stay alive right now and having them say that their, their power bill is going to go up by substantially more so that the average house can save a dollar per month or less on their tax, on their taxes is, is going to be the problem. Because some people, some organizations are going to be paying upwards of thousands a year, $5,000, $6,000 more if they're a heavy consumer. And they have to somehow manage that. So that was the problem with the stormwater fees is that to make it so that we can say, oh, the residents are paying 87 cents less on their stormwater fees, some organizations would be paying thousands more because of that. And it's the same situation here, is that we're basically, the, and when I talk to people who have businesses who are trying, especially the brick and mortar businesses that are struggling at this point, and they're up to their eyeballs in debt, just trying to make the debt payments work right now. And the last thing they're looking for is to find out that they are going to save a whole dollar on their taxes, but end up paying hundreds of dollars more because of electrical franchise fee. So this is not about being able to save a dollar a month. It's about letting businesses be able to stay afloat so that they can actually pay the first $350 of their tax bill. Because I don't think anyone will be thrilled about saving a dollar a month if it means that they can't actually pay their bills at all because their business has gone under. And I don't know what the tipping point is for some people, but I know that a lot of people and a lot of businesses are struggling and more and more going under every single day. And I just didn't want to contribute to having that happen. So it's not necessarily popular to say, hey, we have a 1.2% tax increase and in the end we haven't decreased it. But in reality, it was always that number. We were just dividing it into two different bills. But to do that, to do the division, we are now going to put it onto the backs of larger organizations and businesses to make up that difference of saving that extra under a dollar a month savings on people's tax bill. So I'm just bringing this forward for debate. The only other thing, which is why I said it was quite ironic, is that we have saved $308,000 off of our taxes temporarily. So the irony is that if we actually put this forward and you, then, and you still put the, the franchise fee in next year, almost all of the savings that we have would be absorbed by the franchise fee for that one extra quarter going forward, because we would, we'd actually make it up. So it wouldn't be nearly the same obvious hit going forward because of the differential in the franchise fees. So that would be something to do to absorb the temporary reductions that come forward, is it to actually be absorbed in the franchise fees the following year. So I'll leave it at that and just see what you guys all think about it. But I just have a very difficult time when businesses, and I feel like small businesses have fallen to the cracks so much with, between the shutdowns and all the restrictions and everything else. And then they're somehow supposed to still stay alive when they're basically on life support right now. I, I just, I don't want to add to their burden. And it's, as I said, it's, it's the, it's the first $300, $400 in property taxes are the problem for those people, not the one extra one at the end. So that's it.
I see, sorry, I see Council Broadhead's hand up.
Well, to say that I've never bought the argument, I think we've argued this before. But the huge users of, of electricity and that make and pay huge franchise fees are the, the Costcos and the Walmarts and the Canadian Tires and the U Lines and, and those huge businesses who get to expense not only their utilities, but also their taxes. Something that's not available, quite honestly, to the, to the average homeowner. And, and the reality of it is, is that benefit that we give to these large businesses are borne by the residents of our community. We, we have talked and we have, we have borne the moniker that St. Albert is always the high taxed community. And it's because we don't take advantage of other revenue streams that are available. People in, in our region say, communities like Spruce Grove, oh, they're a low tax community, they do such a good job. Well, they got a 20% franchise fee there. And it, and it's a big differentiator. And the, the rationale behind the 0% franchise fee back in 2002 was to give the business a, a a value proposition for St. Albert. Well, our business tax rate is lower than Edmonton's by a long shot. So they have that differentiator already. But this benefit that we give to our businesses in relation to not charging a franchise fee is borne by the residential rate payer. So yeah, we can give it to the Walmarts and the Costcos and the U Lines and the connect logistics of, of our community. But they just expense their utility rates and away they go. And they don't line up and say, oh, by the way, thank you very much, Mr. and Mrs. who live at 10 Donahue Close, which happens to be my, my address, so I won't use anybody else's. But, but they don't say that. They do business in St. Albert and they pay the rates to do business in St. Albert. And, and quite honestly, we need to take advantage of the revenue streams that are available to us to keep our property taxes for our residential ratepayers as affordable as they can. And yeah, there are lots of people in our community that are hurting. I get it, businesses are hurting, but so are our homeowners hurting. And how do we balance that to the best of our ability and use the levers that we have as a council to generate the funds that we need to run our city? And so we need to be careful about how we do that and do it equitably and, and use them the same ways that everybody else does. And so you know, the motion is to take it off for, for seven months. I, I, or eight months or whatever it is, I, I just think that it's, this was always planned. We need to continue on the process that we're going forward with here and and then plan our finances accordingly.
Thank you, Council Broadhead. Council Watkins.
Actually, Council Broadhead said it well. I don't really need to say anything more.
Anyone else? All right, call for the vote. Oh, sorry, Council Hughes to close, absolutely.
Thanks. Just, let's just be clear to the public, though, the tax increases is a 0.7. It's well over one. And it's just coming under two different bills for the masturbatory people. And I'll, and I'll just say that the, the large consumers are not just Costco, Walmart. And the people that are struggling also have the higher bills that are smaller. And so it's difficult because we're putting everybody into the same group. And it's not, we are not just collecting extra money from those people. They're collecting from the smaller and the medium ones as well. But let's just be clear, this is not a 0.7% tax increase, it's a 1.2. And for some, it's going to be substantially larger than that. That's it, thank you.
Call for the vote. Council Watkins. Okay, that motion fails six to one with Council Hughes in favor. PM zero three three passed on consent, so you can bring your own device now, vacuum truck. I pulled it just because I have questions, but I'll get you to read the motion.
At the cost, the vacuum truck is funded fifty percent from utility reserve and fifty from capital reserve.
Okay. I mean, the backgrounder talked about everything other than the funding source. So and and because we weren't given funding sources for utility ice. Can you tell me how this would have been funded without the motion? Is it coming from reserves or rates?
It comes, it comes from rates which feed the utility reserve, so it's built into the tenure model.
Okay, so it's in the tenure model. So it's five hundred thousand, so if the motion passes, we take two hundred fifty out of the capital reserve. And do have, I have no idea how it affects utility rates because it wasn't in the backgrounder.
Yeah, I think it's about nine, nine cents.
Was it there?
Yeah.
Pardon?
I think it was there, I believe.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, it's nine cents a month.
Okay. Thank you, I needed that here, that I just couldn't find it, sorry. Council Hughes, are there any other questions?
Yeah, I had a couple of quick questions. Kate, are you around? You around, Kate? I can see your screen, but it's black. So when I looked at the BIR, the capital projects are not utility projects, we have capital projects, then we have utility projects, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so it looks at the capital projects are larger than the utility projects between parks, science shop and capital projects, it's like looking at it's like seventy percent even. Like it's it's not, it's past fifty fifty.
From a project-based perspective, but again, we contract out a substantial amount of vac truck work for just normal operational work, which we have to do on a seasonal and monthly basis. As we gain more and more linear infrastructure, when catch basins come in, in all the new developments, we will do, be able to do less capital work because we'll be focusing on utility operations.
Okay, so but right now, I all I have is today. So right now it looks like the past three years, we put more money into capital projects for cost for vacuum trucking than we have for utilities.
Right, and how we would likely manage it is through work order. So we would, we would charge if we wanted to pay back the utility rate, if the utility funded it, we would charge like the capital project a rate without an escalation that a contractor would do, obviously. And they would use our services from utility, we would clean all the catch basins, we would do the work they need to do right ahead of the contractor, and then the contractor would do that. The capital project would then pay the the attributed work order for that particular piece of work.
Okay, so let me get this straight. So the utility, because I withdraw it if it, you know, if it doesn't make any sense or if we have a way to work around this. So you're telling me we'll buy a few utilities and then if anybody from the capital or the operating side that's not utility related wants it, we will bill them and then
Yeah.
you for the utilities?
Yeah, so we would bill them through a work order without an escalation because obviously what, we do work for cost, obviously, and we don't do it at the same kind of premium that any particular contractor would.
Okay, so we'd actually, this would actually generate revenue for our utility side?
What, revenue? No, it would just pay for itself in the sense, so like if we contracted the two workers that are required to operate the truck and the truck would go work on a capital project for the day, the capital project would be billed for that day for the work, and then it would go and pay that particular work order. So the the utility rate, like the rate payer of today, doesn't pay for that work specifically, the capital does.
So I'm just thinking that would decrease the utility rates then going forward, I I mean minorly.
Yeah, a hundred percent.
Happen because we would be saying that here's our costs and you're going to help us pay for some of them.
That's correct, that's correct.
Okay, so even though I'm not seeing this transfer happen, you're telling me that it's going to occur?
Yeah, so we have that, we we have that experience today. So if I do some work and I need Tony to do some landscaping for me after, he bills me the 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 landscaping work order for my particular kind of operational project.
All right, well, I'll tell you what, Mayor Heron, I'll withdraw it now that I understand how it's working. It's good.
Okay. All right, we have no outside agencies motions. I'm going to give the staff a second to put the numbers into the omnibus. Five minutes? Okay, they need five minutes to do the omnibus. So we will reconvene here at six oh five and then we'll be done.